Notice and we'll proceed from there. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at the town hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Thursday, July tenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P. M. on the petition of Thomas Wise, who seeks a variance and a special permit under sections four point three point two point eight point two point B slash four point three point two point eight of the zoning bylaws in order to add in addition to the existing single-family dwelling and to create an accessory apartment as per plan submitted on the property located at one eighty-one South Street in Reading, Unless this is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessor's Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Sonum, Woburn, and Wilmington. Now, testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak tonight, either for or against the project as an abutter, or even as the proponent, project proponent, please stand and raise your right hand. We'll swear you in. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, proper response as I do.
I do.
Okay. Is the petitioner here, or is representative?
Evening, Director Chairman, members of the DVA. My name is Michael Conway, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner.
Okay. The floor rejoice then.
May I use the table?
The issue man.
Thank you. So, we are here for a continuation of a previous meeting, and I've been working with the team here, the petitioners, the architects, the builders. I've gone through all the materials, I've taken a look at the proposed minutes from last meeting. I promised Tom I wouldn't speak all night, but I would like to address the specific concerns and issues that came up at the last meeting. I think it's a good place to start, for us to sort of get on the same page and see where we are. As well, since the last meeting, there have been some changes which I think will affect some of the information that was given to the board last meeting, as well as the possible outcome. So, as stated in the notice, we are seeking a variance and a special permit for an accessory apartment under section four point three point two point eight point two B. And going back to the last meeting, there were numerous concerns that I found in the minutes, some that I couldn't tell what the actual issue is, I'm sure we'll flush those out, but I found six distinct issues that came up that I'd like to address. The first issue was the side yard setback, and I think it was the chair who took a look at the plot plan last time and determined that the rear setback may not be acceptable, and I think the number was fourteen point six that he would come up with, mostly because it wasn't noted on the plot plan. Since last meeting, we have had a revised plot plan done, all of the setbacks are noted. Because of some changes to the architecture, both side setbacks are now seventeen point seventy-five feet. So, you can see at Appendix A, which is the new plot plan. So, at this point, all the setbacks meet the criteria necessary, and that was the only one in question, and it's obvious. The next issue that came up was the entrance to the unit on the plans that were submitted the last time, and I think the concern, at least as far as I can see, was that the entrance looked like, quote-unquote, "another house." In other words, there was a front door already, now there was another entrance and a porch. Since the last meeting, the architectural plans have been redone. You'll see, if you look at Appendix P, which is the new set of plans, I think the best pages to look at are A ten and A eleven. The entrance has been moved to the side, so it's completely non-visible from the front as you're driving by. You'll also see that there was a porch at one point that has also been removed. So, if you look at, I think A ten is the best. As you can see, the new accessory clearly just looks like another portion of the home. And then the side elevation, you can see where the new door would be. So, I think that's taken care of that issue. You know, from what I've seen in the submissions and from driving up and down in the neighborhood, this house looks almost exactly like many of the other colonials in that area with the new renditions. It's not significantly larger than any of them, in fact, there are a lot of homes in the area that are larger than this one. I know the plans, it looks sort of larger than life, but if you've driven by, which I think most of you folks do, you can see that it really, based on these plans, would fit in very closely with all of the other homes in the area. The next discrete issue that came up, there was some concern that the board couldn't grant a variance and a special permit in the same meeting. At the outset, I'd like to say that I don't think with this case, we need a variance, and we'll get to that later, but in the event that we do, there are two cases that, prior cases with this board that we've cited, Appendix D and Appendix F, where there were accessory apartments, they applied for a variance and a special permit, and both were granted in the same meeting. So, I think that sets precedent that this board would in fact be able to grant, if necessary, a variance and a special permit in the same meeting. Going on through the minutes, I saw there was some concern about spot zoning, and I know this comes up when you have situations where it's either rare that it comes before the board, or a situation where it's difficult to interpret the zoning, but I would submit that in this case, there is no spot zoning. We are not, before you, asking you to change the zoning whatsoever. In fact, it's just the opposite. We're looking for you to give us exactly what the bylaw offers, construction of an accessory apartment. In fact, if you looked at the section four point three point two point eight point one, which is the purpose of this bylaw, it says to encourage the construction of a limited number of housing units. The bylaw is encouraging this, and using the word "construction." That's all that we're asking for. In fact, the two cases we cite at Appendix D and Appendix F were looking for essentially the same thing that was granted by this board, and in both cases, there was, they were not deemed to be spot zoning. So, I don't see that as a distinct issue here, in my look at both this case and the two prior cases that we've cited. Now, one of the more major issues, as I see them, was the square footage requirement under the zoning bylaw, and that's the gross and net square footage. And what's most significant at this meeting is that there were changes to the plans which reduced the gross and net square footage of the proposed accessory. We've also now been able to uncover the square footage of this property as it was in nineteen eighty-two, in an attempt to make that clearer based on the bylaw. So, what we did is we got the assessor's card from October twelfth of nineteen eighty-two. We also confirmed that there'd been no construction from August first of nineteen eighty-two to October twelfth of nineteen eighty-two, as best we could. And based on that, and this is in page four of our submission, you'll see that our sort of starting or jumping off point is two thousand one hundred and seventy-two square feet. And that's based on the information that we provided, we excluded the areas that are to be excluded, and we went off of the town's measurements. So, if you looked at that calculation, that would allow us, by the bylaw, the one-third calculation would be seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. If you look, again, I, sorry, I'm jumping around, but all this stuff is in different places in the submission. If you look at Appendix B, A six, page A six, it shows you that the proposed gross square footage of the accessory is seven twenty-one, and the net square footage is six sixty-four. So, again, we are now within the guidelines as set forth in the bylaw. So, I think that that issue goes away, and any variance related to that issue goes away, as I know it came up last time. And again, these changes were made by essentially shrinking by, I think about a foot and a half, the structure, so we could get it within the guidelines. The next issue, and I'm sure this was a significant portion of the time, is the interpretation, if you will, of section four point three point two point eight point two B. And that's where we get to this argument, this sort of back and forth, where it talks about one-third of the gross floor area of the dwelling, which is part of, which I think the board has at times said in the last meeting, you know, that is within sort of the footprint of the nineteen eighty-two timeframe, where we stop it in August first of nineteen eighty-two. I don't agree with that. I don't think that this section is meant to be a within value. I don't think that, based on several things, that an accessory has to be within the footprint of the nineteen eighty-two dwelling. And there are really three reasons I say that. The first is the purpose of the bylaw, which we've looked at and we've read already. They're trying to encourage alteration and construction of accessory apartments. And to me, those are two separate things, two distinct things, and they use both words in the bylaw. They use alteration, they use construction. Construction, to me, is building something new. So, if you're building within the footprint of an old house, you're not building something new. I think the bylaw was meant to allow alteration of existing homes, as well as building new structures that meet the guidelines of the bylaw. The second, and I think most important with regard to the interpretation, is the precedent of this board. Now, I've attached two very recent cases, one from two thousand and twelve, one from two thousand and thirteen. The first was twelve dash oh-eight, which was forty-three Belmont Street, and you'll find the board's decision out of Appendix D. Essentially, what happened, there was the structure that was built in nineteen eighty-two, there was an addition that was built in nineteen eighty-four, they were petitioning this board to allow the accessory apartment in the area that was built in nineteen eighty-four. Clearly not within the nineteen eighty-two footprint, that was in all of the submission papers, and the board was well aware of it. The board specifically looked at Section A, and then made a note in their decision that they've looked at all the other sections of the bylaw for accessory apartments. And at that time, they determined that a variance and special permit would be allowed for this petitioner to build an accessory apartment outside of the original nineteen eighty-two footprint of the building. So, basically, that decision shows that they looked at the bylaw as it being part of the structure and not within the structure, and that's crystal clear based on the fact that this area that was built in nineteen eighty-four was in fact part of the accessory. The second case that I submitted at Appendix F is case thirteen point two-two, and this was sixty-three Whittier. And what the petitioner had asked here is that they be allowed to completely demolish the home, build a new home with an accessory apartment, and I believe was a non-conforming lot. They built bigger than the original footprint, and the accessory apartment was way outside of the original footprint. Again, the board looked at the bylaw and allowed a variance and a special permit, again saying that the accessory need not be within the footprint of the nineteen eighty-two timeframe that we have from the bylaw. And then the final thing I would note, as sort of a reason that it should be allowed to be looked at as a part of, is the proposed changes that we have coming to the bylaws. I think everyone's familiar with them, I believe you're probably going to be talking about them tonight. This whole issue would essentially go away, and I think what everyone is looking at in doing this is the purpose of the original bylaw, and how they can effectuate that without the mess of this nineteen eighty-two dwelling and footprint that we've been dealing with. So, it's those three reasons. It's the purpose of the bylaw, it's the precedent of this board, and it's also the proposed changes that we're all hopefully going to be working on and passing shortly. So, I think that covers everything that came up at the last meeting. If you have questions for me, or for Tom, or for the architect, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or get in deeper to the materials, but it's pretty detailed, I think we put in there as much as we possibly could.
Very good, thank you. Glenn, have you had a chance to take a look at this application for the apartment, and for, well, I guess the first thing, number one, they're putting an addition on the house.
Correct.
And it appears to me, based on the new plot plan that was submitted, et cetera, that they are allowed to do that by right. They have sufficient lot area, lot frontage, et cetera, the zoning district will allow them to put that addition in by right.
To put the addition on, yeah, as a single-family resident, yes.
On a single-family resident, right. They're allowed to do that. And then, number two, they are going to construct an accessory apartment that will be in part of the addition, we'll, both members can discuss that, whatever, but I guess the question is, going through the criteria for the accessory apartment in regards to the technical criteria, square footage, et cetera, have you had a chance to take a look at that?
Yes, I did. No, that, that seems to comply. The, I don't have, my letter of denial isn't in my package, I don't know if you have it.
No, we don't.
Right. I don't know where all the information is, and I don't have the certified plot plan with the dimensions on the exterior of the building.
You don't.
But I don't, I don't want to have that either.
Yeah.
But the by, the way we've been addressing all these special permits for the accessory apartments is that the apartment's supposed to be part of the existing dwelling, and in this case, I believe it's going into the new addition.
Right.
Okay, and we've, we've had a number of cases before the board addressing that matter.
Exactly.
I mean, the restrictions, the first restrictions under four three two A two, paragraph A says the dwelling in which the accessory apartment to be located was legally occupied prior to nineteen eighty-two. That's where the, that's where the, that's where the accessory apartment's supposed to be. And there's another, there's another thing in here about ten percent of the lot coverage under paragraph D.
Right.
So, myself and the board, we've done, we've done many, many cases, and we've, we've always held to it that it had to be part of the existing dwelling. The purpose wasn't to construct an addition and put the apartment entirely in that. But then again, on Whittier Road, we, the board did just kind of like the opposite. We allowed, we allowed an accessory apartment in a structure that doesn't even exist.
Right.
So, so that, that bothered me, so, I don't know what else to say.
Well, that's, I think, I think, you know, that aspect of it certainly is up for board discussion tonight.
Yep.
That's what we'll be discussing. But in regards to the technical aspects of the accessory apartment, square footage, et cetera, things such as that.
No, they, they, you know, the addition complies with the requirements of the bylaw, they could build that as a right without the accessory apartment. The accessory apartment triggers the special permit in this case.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. David, do you have any comments on this?
I do. I do, okay. Glenn, refresh my recollection, if you would. Last time that the petitioner was here, we collectively, as a board, made several suggestions about what the petitioner might do with the proposed plan, so that he wouldn't have to come back here, correct? Simply making a, potentially making a shared kitchen facility out of the addition, and probably wouldn't even have to come back here? Was that this case?
I didn't recall that. I, there may have been some discussion that if we would have, if.
Okay, I thought we, I thought we offered some constructive criticism on that, constructive, I think, advice and/or suggestions, I don't think it was criticism.
Well, I mean, we can, an addition can have, a proposal can have as many bedrooms, bathrooms, or living rooms in it. The second kitchen would possibly constitute an apartment.
Would trigger the apartment.
Right. So, if, if, if we, I think, I don't know if it was the last time we were here, because I know I met on one of these meetings, but I think.
I think it was last time this petitioner was in.
Okay.
And the board, I think.
Yeah, if there was a common kitchen in the area, then it wouldn't really be an apartment, we wouldn't even be here.
All right, all right. So, so I just wanted to reflect, refresh my recollection. Mr. Wise has probably seen me more times this week than he cares to, so I'll try to keep it as short and sweet as I can. Explain to me, as best you can, we've heard you're very detailed, you know, as we've seen earlier this week, you, you've certainly researched the ins and outs of this, and you've been providing lots of great feedback during the course of the separate zoning advisory committee that I serve on's attempts to update the zoning bylaw. But I guess the first question I have is, how does, other than the criteria, and I see the six criteria, how does this petition differ from the earlier petition when you were last here? Other than you've done, you've obviously done a lot more research, you've obviously updated some of your information, and I want to talk about that as well, but just from a big-picture standpoint, tell me how this petition before the board, this case differs from the last case that you had before the board?
Primary differences are what we outlined.
Okay.
However, I would say that we did, and I was just talking, we were just talking briefly while you were asking Glenn the question, and Diane can jump in and comment as well. I think one of the feedback points wasn't so much a shared kitchen, as whether or not could you reconfigure the accessory inside the house to go with the interpretation of within, right? And we did look at that, to try and figure out whether we could make it work from a flow perspective, from upstairs, downstairs perspective, from the idea that, you know, just because it's an accessory apartment, doesn't mean people, you want to cohabitate, but you don't want to give up privacy, right? You're, you're still, as, as an aging couple, you want your own space. As a family, you want your own space. You want to be there to support each other, but you don't want to be on top of each other all the time. So, the primary thing we looked at, to try and see how we could work that, is taking the existing kitchen and the existing dining room, which you can see, I think, in A four or A three, or something like that of the type of the thing, as the base, and then putting the bedroom upstairs with a separate and new set of stairs going up there, to see what we could do right above that, so that that half of the house became the accessory. We talked about other things, but because of the footprint of the house in nineteen eighty-two, it was kind of funky, you can see that in Appendix B, I believe, there was a cutout, and that, that room didn't work. It also cut off the floor of the basement, which we could have figured out, but the front side wouldn't work because that cut off the floor into the upstairs, we wouldn't have access to the upstairs, we'd have to come up with a whole new set of stairs on the other side. There was other reasons, but ultimately, what we came down with from one potentially feasible solution, and Diane jumped in and told me if I'm off the pace, was the existing kitchen, the existing dining room, and my daughter's room upstairs became the master's bedroom. The only bathroom we could figure out to work in that was the bathroom next to the existing kitchen on the main floor. So, that meant that you have aging parents going upstairs and downstairs in the middle of the night for the bathroom, or anything else along those lines, which presents a problem. A, because they're aging, B, because she's already got a severely osteoarthritis knee problem that's just getting worse, not getting better. And ultimately, we just felt like it was untenable. It was a non-starter, it wasn't a quality-of-life conversation, it wouldn't work for us as a family. So, we looked at it really hard, we had mock drawings we put up, and we just decided, for the reasons I said, it just won't work.
Okay.
In addition, you know, what Mike said, just a point of clarification, we brought it in by a foot and two inches on the side, and that's why you see it went from sixteen five to seventeen and three-quarters, essentially. So, we brought that in by a foot and two inches, and we reconfigured the floor of the basement as well, so it goes through the shared office, opposed to through their bedroom, so that comes out of the calculation from a gross perspective.
And we changed the front elevation to not have a front porch and second egress, first second entrance, as a result of the conversation the last time.
Okay. All right. So, I have, I have a couple of comments, and I, and I think some, some different perspectives that I want to share from, from some of the things in your presentation, I just want to clarify and make sure that we have all the correct information. So, I think, well, I don't think our last meeting, we decided that granting both a special permit and a variance was something that we were not allowed to do. I think it was that we weren't able to, and we never have as a board, as far as I know in the history of the board, granted a special permit, then a variance, then a special permit on that variance, which I think, if I recall our conversation last time, which was what was required. So, so, so I don't think we've ever ruled or discussed that we wouldn't, as a board, issue a variance on a special permit, because it's been done in other matters, other than a, an accessory apartment, than the two cases that you presented, there's been various other cases where it's happened as well. So, I, I don't think that was the sticking point. I certainly appreciate your attention to detail, and I, and I can tell you, like I've said, I've seen Tom, and Tom's seen me, probably more times than he wants to, in the past couple of months, but, you know, I can, I know that you're detail-oriented, and I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the fact that you've put together a lot of these, I just want to make sure that we're working within the, within the bylaw, and within what I think our position is. The next issue is I, as part of our review of the zoning bylaw, I want to, I want to, I want to discuss your version and interpretation of four three two eight one, which is the purpose, because as Tom will tell you, we are in the process of trying to rewrite many of these provisions to present to town meeting in the fall. And again, this is in draft form, we're still receiving community feedback, but I can tell you, as part of our review of the intent of these provisions, when they were formed, when they were amended, when they were approved, four three two eight one was put in place to actually limit the number of instances where this is the case. Not to necessi, well, both to encourage, but, but again, more so to limit the number of multi-family, multi-unit dwellings in town. So, I specifically disagree, and again, this may not be something that the board shares, this is just me, based upon my knowledge and research into the history of these bylaws, I think this is part of, part of what we're, what we're, we're trying to change some of those things, because I agree that in the future, we may see something different. But the way the bylaw reads today, which is what we have to rule on today, this is a section that is meant to allow these accessory apartments, and they're going, they're going to be need for much more of them as population ages, as boomerang kids, as they're usually called, come back to roost, you know, so we understand that as a vision, our town needs to think about how we're going to allow that in the future. But as I sit here today, that bylaw and the intent of that section was more so to limit the amount of these than necessarily to encourage them, in my opinion. As far as the, the square foot analysis and the August one nineteen eighty-two analysis, can you show me on the field card where, where it shows us that August nineteen eighty-two, the, the building meets the criteria as set out in the, in the restrictions?
It's October.
October is that field card?
Yeah. That's why I mentioned that, we checked, confirm that no construction had been done, nothing had been changed, no alterations, as best we can see, between August and October.
Bear with me for a second, because I didn't see it. Which, of the, of the field card submission that you made, property card submission, where would I find that?
Can I come over?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's easier, we had a, if we will help.
Next to the last page.
Last page?
Next.
Next to the last page?
You'll see it, next to the one.
That's the last page.
That's not the same piece, that's not the paper I see. It is.
Let me see, let me see what you, what your face.
So, this, if you, you have my submission?
That's what this is from?
No, this is not from my submission, I did not include this whole thing in the submission.
No, this is the assessor's. This is the field card for the assessor.
That was cloud about package, wasn't it?
Correct, it is.
Oh, but it wasn't what he submitted, it was what we.
I filtered out all that stuff that comes in this page, because this is the October page.
Got it, got it, got it, all right, so that's, all right, thank you.
All that other stuff is all the other dates. That's the only one that's October nineteen eighty-two.
Gotcha.
So, I think it's Appendix B in the actual submission, or something like that.
Appendix C.
Appendix C, thanks. Yeah, B is the architecture, right.
And so, all right, and, all right, thank you for that. And then my last comment is go through, go through your rationale again for me to help me understand why you interpret four, three, two, eight, two, B as, as not requiring the, the proposed dwelling to be within the footprint of the existing dwelling.
There were three reasons. The, my initial thought on the purpose, which we-
Bear with me. You were skipping around a lot. I was trying to follow along. So if I could ask you just to repeat those.
Absolutely. I, I mentioned three things. First was the purpose of the bylaw. I know that we disagree, and, and that's fine. But it, it does say that it encourages accessory apartments. It, it, the limitation, I think, is within the bylaw and the criteria. So it, in and of the conditions that have to be met is where you get your limitation. They don't want everyone to have one, understood. But it explicitly says it encourages the alteration and construction. And basically what I'm getting at is to construct something is to make something new. So to make something new and to have an accessory apartment, it doesn't make sense. If you construct something new, it's going to be, that apartment is going to be in what's new. The second reason was the precedent that I cited. Whittier Drive being the clearest situation. The whole thing was knocked down. It was rebuilt. It wasn't there in eighty-two. It wasn't within the footprint. And it was allowed by this board. If we, if we can't, you know, hold on to precedent and what's been done in the past, it, it's difficult. There haven't been a lot of these cases. I think there have been a total of, of four?
Four in the last eight years.
In the last eight years, two were allowed, the two I cited. I believe one was withdrawn and one was sort of a flyer to see, you know, what would happen if they brought it. There haven't been a lot of these. There just haven't. The only precedent that we have on decisions is what I've given you. So, you know, to say this is what the board normally does with it, I respectfully disagree. I think that's the absolute strongest argument, and it's the most difficult to get around. The two that have been allowed are almost identical in most ways to this petition. So that's my strongest argument. And the third is the zoning change. They're trying to make changes to clean up this bylaw, for lack of a better term. It's difficult. It's something that the town knows we need. We have an aging population. It's something that the residents want for situations exactly like this. And changes are being made that would make this petition much, much easier to get passed this board.
Thank you. I think I'm finished with Alan.
Thank you, David. John, any comment?
A couple.
Okay. You have the floor.
Well, first of all, I'd like to, I think I'll, I'll first start with the aspect of precedents. First of all, there is no precedence. Board in the years that I've been a member has not let one case determine the outcome of another case. Although we take that into account, and each, you don't have any two cases on the cases that, or hearings that I have sat that were exactly alike, with the exceptions of the teardown and rebuilds, which is the six-three situations. Those are carbon copies in most cases. If they meet the criteria, they're very specific. If it meets all the criteria, you go forward with it. But on all the other cases, precedent is, is not determined, does not determine the outcome of a, another case or another hearing before the board. I'll just say that. I will say that in the Belmont property, the vote was four, one. I was the one. And the reason for that is because we were establishing basically a two-family structure. Even though it was called an accessory apartment, it was a two-family. The second one that you talked about, Whittier Road. Whittier Road was a, was very much different than this particular case. And I'll give you an example at the end. And that was the way it was laid out, number one. And we talked about the shared kitchen in that particular case. And I can't remember because I, I asked for the minutes, but that wasn't in the minutes. So I can't go back and reconstruct that unless I go back and get a tape. And I didn't have enough time to go back and get a tape. Let me go on to purpose.
So to what?
Purpose. I think David adequately covered that. But I would say that in nineteen eighty-two, for that town meeting, this bylaw which took effect August, I think it's the tenth, I happened to be around. I happened to be around as a zoning board member. I happened to be around as a town meeting member. And that particular, this particular bylaw took virtually the entire meeting timeframe to get through. And the purpose, let me go back and tell you about the purpose because I'm a big purpose person. The intent and purpose of the bylaw. The intent and purpose of the bylaw in nineteen eighty-two was that there are a large number of larger family homes in, in the, in the town that you could easily get an accessory apartment into between the four hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet. The intention was that no more than ten percent of accessory apartments to these homes that would qualify would actually be given as a special permit to reduce the possibilities that you would be creating open market on creation of two-family structures. Because as, and I, I've already told David, my concern about the new accessory apartment bylaw is that anybody can do anything they want and create two-family structures in single-family residence areas, zones in the town. Because you don't need anything to do that, just like what you're doing. But we have to go by what's in the bylaw today. And I have some questions. I, I have some concerns about the validity of the calculations that you put in here. I'm not going to go over them right now. I, I want other board members to, to react to that too. But my last thing is, if I had an aging family member that I wanted to make the accessory apartment for, who I know had orthopedic problems, why would I put her bedroom or his bedroom on the second floor, which they would have to navigate the stairs to get up there? I don't care if it's even two stairs. But you're just talking about putting the base of the apartment, the, the base of the apartment on one floor and the bedroom on, on a floor above that. And I can't understand why you would do that.
Can I address that specifically?
Certainly.
That's exactly why we could not fit it in the existing, in the footprint. If you look at the drawings as they are for what we're proposing, the bedroom will be on the main floor with the living room, with the bathroom, with the kitchen. It will be on one floor. Everything will be on one floor. And that's exactly, what you're saying is exactly what we were going through and debating and discussing, whether we could, whether it made any sense, and we agree with you, it makes no sense.
But then I have to go back to the calculations then. I thought in your presentation, Councilor, that you mentioned that it was on the second floor. When I was reading the plans, I thought that it was on the first floor, but then you said it was on the second floor.
So the only person I said when we, to answer Mr. Ternan, if I'm pronouncing that properly? Question about, sorry about that, was, you know, the consideration of, did you take into account our, our feedback from last time? That's when the second floor came up, was that was the way we could make the thing fit. And, but we agree, just like you do, that there's, that doesn't make any logical sense to do that.
But the intention was not to build on so that you could create that situation. That is with whatever might be created in the new bylaw coming up. And town meeting and Zach will have to deal with that when it comes forward.
Can you clarify that? I don't understand the, the point there.
Well, you're asking, you're asking in essence whether it's, I saw the proposal, whether it's detached or attached proposal that you can build on to an existing structure and create from that resulting existing, in existing structure, you can create a new accessory apartment, which again, opens up the opportunity for anybody who has a single-family cake right now to build it into a colonial with an accessory apartment. The accessory apartments in the town are not referred to by realtors as accessory apartments.
They're referred to as in-laws.
They're called what?
In-laws.
In-laws. So my question goes back to what you put in here tonight. In the area, in your area, there is an in-law apartment. So my question to you, are you willing, are you willing to give the location of that? And are you asking for enforcement from the building inspector as to the validity of that in-law apartment? And I'll just stop right there and let rest the board. But my real concern is that we are, by granting this, we are in essence guaranteeing or, or precedent setting, as Councilor said, any two, any single family to be created into a two-family for the purposes of gaining an accessory apartment or in-law apartment, which two years, five years, six years down the road is going to be a two-family. And we've had that happen before on some of the earlier ones. That's why for years, people haven't come in because we were denying them because we saw it was happening.
I think that, similar to Whittier, we would be in agreement with any restriction the board would want to put on with regard to rentals.
But see, the, the problem, the problem there is, how do you enforce that?
Indeed.
Are we going to, are we going to, we going to say that there was going to be a register for all accessory apartments in the town of Reading that gets, gets checked every year for, by the assessor to veri- verify that they are legally occupied by a member of the family?
And, and how do we- For any case, if there's someone, there's someone that's, that is hired and paid to do that. I mean, the bylaws are the bylaws if, if it's allowed and we agree to a restriction.
I'm, I'm just saying that there's, there's a potential-
My answer would be yes.
Okay.
I mean, John, you asked the question, where, where is the accessory in your neighborhood? He's here, actually.
Okay.
Richard, right across the street, one eighty-six, has the accessory in your neighborhood.
And I, I wasn't going to say it, but I, I will say it. Your interpretation of the, within the existing structure, the within does not appear in the, in the language of the bylaw.
Correct.
What does appear is the phrase, "of which it is a part", which to me, if you look it up in the dictionary, is basically the same thing. They didn't use the word "within". They used "of which it is a part".
And it will be.
It will be.
A part of the, of the existing, of the dwelling.
Not at, not until we give a special permit for the construction of a, a, a larger, a larger unit, a variance on part B of the accessory bylaw, and then a var- a, a special permit on the accessory bylaw request.
Why would part B need a variance?
Well, that's what you're asking for right now.
No, I was saying, I don't think it's necessary. That, that was the comment I made initially.
Okay.
If we interpret the bylaw the, the way I present it, it's part of the structure, as, just as Whittier was.
Okay.
So the variance isn't necessary.
Okay, that's, that's for the board to discuss.
Wait, no, that, I'm just saying that, that's my take on it.
Okay, okay. That's all I have for you.
Okay, John. Thank you. Si.
Well, the first comment I really would like to make is you have obviously put an awful lot of effort into this project. I just want you to know, at least from this member's viewpoint, it's recognized and I commend you for it, okay? It's been a lot of, a lot of detail here. You just ended with the comment that I was going to ask you. That is, you said a variance would not be required. And I was going to ask you to try to get a little bit more precise in exactly why you feel a variance is not required in this case.
All I can do, and again, I'm not trying to, you know, jam precedent down your throat, but all I can do is look at what the board's done. Four cases, two decisions that I can read. If, if, if that's not going to be, if, if part of is considered a new structure that has an accessory apartment, I, I can't see having to go any further with the argument. It, it's, it's a new structure that will contain an accessory apartment, same as what I've seen in, in doing the research on what the board's done in the past. I, I can only interpret the bylaw as you folks do based on what's been done. It's really the only way to do it. We can all read it, and we can all think, hey, this is what it should be, or this, you know, they're going through that now. But how do we know exactly what can be done and why? We look at what's been done in the past. You know, if there were a hundred of these cases and every one of them came down in the favor of what we're looking for, I think the board would say, you know, does this land done? Well, a hundred percent of them have, but there's only been two. It's not something that comes up often. So I think that's how you have to interpret the bylaw, based on the past. And it make, it makes sense. I mean, it's not, it's not, to me, it makes complete sense. It's part of the new structure. You know, there are going to be few in-laws or accessories because of the other restrictions. It's got to be small. It's got to be a certain square footage. It's related to the original square footage. You know, houses that were constructed in nineteen eighty-two. There are a lot of restrictions, and that's why we have a limited amount, or we could have a limited amount. That's why you don't see this every day. If everyone wanted to do it and had the ability to do it, they would. But I think those limitations would restrict, you know, much more than, than the board's concerned about.
The other thing is that there's a lot of calculation here vis a vis square footage, gross area, all that kind of stuff. I don't know. Have you had the opportunity to see what we were just giving before this, at the start of this meeting?
I, I was given it a minute beforehand, so not in detail, no.
Which basically takes issue with what you have come up with.
I read through it.
Okay, so it raises the question of what is right and what is wrong, what is proper and what is improper, okay? And that's something that we really haven't had an opportunity to review in the detail. We have six pages of stuff here. I think we'll talk about that when you get on the panel. So, you know, we'll deal with that at that time. I would agree with you that if you look at some of the other cases, it appears to be precedent setting in some, and, and John loses the fact that we don't like to deal with that kind of stuff. We're talking that way because, you know, it does lead to other issues. But it's something that we cannot lose sight of and set aside. And I'm just going to let it sit at that, at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Si.
Eric, comments?
Just a few. I happen to agree with you, Michael, that you do not need a variance. It's, you know, I know that the board, you know, they've, they've construed it in other cases that it has to be within that footprint. My reading of the bylaw, I don't, I don't see a way that you can hold us to that. I, I agree with you that, you know, no, you, you don't need that variance. In terms of the square footage, I think that's probably the next discussion that we'll come to with the, the public forum opening. But I will note that it looks like, and I, I think we just got this today, but the, the dispute about the square footage, it seems to exclude the unfinished basement. But if I remember my review of your materials, it looks like you do have a partially finished basement with the wallpaper and, and paneling. So I guess I just wanted to throw that out there, just anticipating, you know, what, you know, discussion on those calculations. That, you know, it seems from the accessor, from the assessor's card that, that was in place, at least as of October. And I, I think, you know, we have to be reasonable, and I know that it's as of August, but, you know, you've got September, October. It's two months afterwards. You've got some really credible evidence there, so. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Well, my opinion on this, and I, I think what we've done in the past is, I think on these one, we've given a variance and a special permit for the, for the accessory apartments before. The thought behind that was that they needed the variance because they hadn't met the criteria of building within the nineteen eighty-two footprint. And that's why they required the variance. And then they got a special permit to construct the accessory apartment on that. And I know we've had differing opinions on the board in regards to the interpretation of the nineteen eighty-two criteria on that, whether it should be within the nineteen eighty-two construction or, in my personal opinion, was it, the, the site was occupied, and the house was occupied legally off- legally occupied in nineteen eighty-two. After that, additions were made, et cetera, et cetera. It can be done, and that's where we've said, well, then that would require a variance if need be because it wasn't built within the nineteen eighty-two footprint. And I think that's, that's where they were coming from on that.
May I just make one brief comment?
Sure.
Where, where both of the, the prior cases that I cited, their variance was to section A though, correct? So the variance didn't have to do with the nineteen eighty, the, the part of?
A is, right, it had to do with A. So there, I'll point that specifically since I've been intimately involved in it for so long. The two previous cases, the variances were to section A. Although you don't seem to have it, Glenn's objection is to section B for us. Both of which are around nineteen eighty-two, but clearly he, nobody can make the argument that our house didn't exist in nineteen eighty-two. So A is null and void, we pass that one. The only question then becomes the part of or within. And in the readings of your decisions, you reviewed the other criteria after you reviewed A for those other ones. So we view that as the precedent that we discussed.
Well, I, I just wanted to take a quick look at that then. Page fifteen. Yeah, page fifteen it is? Okay. Was it the dwelling? Okay, it was to A, the dwelling in which the accessory apartment is to be located was legally occupied prior to nineteen, oh, saying who these wrong, the accessory apartment. Okay, yeah, no, I see, I see what you're saying, that, that was. And I, and I, okay, I, it, it's almost like the two of them are tied together.
Yeah.
Obviously, the accessory apartment, if it's constructed, like in your particular case, would not have been legally occupied in nineteen eighty-two.
The dwelling of which it was parked.
The dwelling of which it is parked, was. And it's, it's again, it's, it's, it's an interpretation, maybe you're playing words, et cetera. And I think that's which the reference was, and the other criteria was that.
Yes.
It certainly wasn't occupied in nineteen eighty-two where the accessory apartment was going.
The one thing I noted.
I just wanted, yeah, that's what I was thinking, where we were coming from as a board.
Right.
When we did that before, yeah.
I mean, I, that's why I was, when I first saw the denial on, on B, I figured, well, everyone is gonna have this argument about, is it part of? But neither one of the cases did.
Right.
There was not even discussion, it must've just been, well, part of is part of, you can build it, you know?
There's, there's discussion, you don't see it in the minutes.
There's nothing in the minutes, nothing in the decisions, other than, other than to say, we went through all the criteria.
Right.
And it was met.
And in regards to, I know, my, in my personal, and limitations have, have been brought up too in regards to the number. And number one, I, I do believe that the, the way the bylaws are written, that they certainly, at that time, wanted to encourage accessory apartments, whether, at that time, they were, accessory apartment was also in-law apartment under that umbrella, and I think it is. So be it. I think the limitation is clear in their, in number one, in the restrictions that they do, a, a, as you've brought up. But also, I think the limitations are clear when they go to the ten percent.
Yes.
Maximum in town. And once you've hit that threshold, there can no longer be any more accessory apartments approved. And I don't think we've reached that threshold, we're far from it. So, and I know we've asked that question of past accessory apartments, and we've always been told, no, no, we're far from it, so I don't.
Well, the intention of all of that was the affordable housing.
Right.
So once we reach our threshold of ten percent, there's no need for the granting of that. Not that they couldn't be granted, it's just that you've reached the, the threshold, so you don't need to go any further.
You don't need to go.
I think that's the biggest governor of, of, you know, you say everyone would do it, everyone can't do it.
Right.
You know, it's, that would be like saying, well, they're gonna make you put as much forty B as they wanna have in the town, you know? Everyone would say, oh, it's gonna be everywhere, but it can't be.
Yep.
It's, that's probably the.
You could, because they don't fit.
Right, well, because there's that limitation as well.
So, uh, so, uh, on my current last back, personal aspect, as I said when I started out, I believe certainly the, the addition to the house can be built by right. They've met all setbacks. It's a legal lot, a legal conforming lot. And number two, then, they can build the, you have the accessory apartment within a house now that is, had an addition put on. And I'm looking at the path of the, it was legally occupied in nineteen eighty-two, but the portion without the accessory apartment, or with the accessory apartment, was not constructed in nineteen eighty-two. And that's where the variance would come in, prior to then the granting of a special permit for an accessory apartment. I think we've heard the board members, we can certainly come back to them here afterwards.
Chairman, may I ask one question? So I, I'm just trying to follow what you're saying. I, I think what you're saying is, you're bringing it back to section A. In other words, you're looking at the nineteen eighty-two as legally occupied in nineteen eighty-two?
Yes, yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
That's the way I look at it. It was a legally occupied structure in nineteen eighty-two.
Understood.
Yep. At this particular time, I will open the meeting up to public comment. If you care to comment on this, raise your hand and we'll recognize you. And if you give us your name and who you're representing, if you're representing a resident and their address. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Demora, and I'm an attorney at the law firm, Demora Smith. And I represent the direct abutters to the property, Michael and Leanne Webb.
Thank you.
And I have submitted what I planned to just use as my presentation for tonight. But I thought that since there were such pearls of wisdom, you might all wanna keep them and bring them home. My clients object to the grant of the special permit and the variance in this matter. And the primary reason for that is because that the special permit and the variance also proposes the construction of a second driveway in the house that's going in front of the part where the accessory unit will be, and the taking down of a very large public shade tree. And that shade tree and that area is the area that immediately butts, abuts the Webb's property. I, what I went, what I did was, I went through the various criteria that the board has in the zoning bylaw and pointed out and highlighted the ones that I believe the petitioners fall short on. They don't fall short on all of them, obviously, but they do fall short on some of them, and I would like to talk about those with you tonight. And then the second thing I'm gonna talk about is the whole notion about whether or not, if they don't meet any of the criteria, they can somehow still get what they want by getting this board to grant them a variance from those specific provisions. And my argument tonight is that they can't. And the reason they can't is because the hardship that they are alleging entitles them to a variance is not a permissible hardship under the case law in Massachusetts about what a permissible hardship would be. And I'll talk about that a little more when I get to that section of my, my presentation. I, I agree with some of the members of this board, having reviewed the bylaw, that the bylaw is not really intended to open the floodgates or encourage additional housing in the town of Reading. What it really does is it take, gives that right, but then takes it back with the other hand. And how that, they, how the bylaw does that is it says right in it that it is designed for a limit, for a limited number of units, number one. Number two, it sets out very specific, six factors that should be considered as, and it says in the bylaw, at a minimum, those factors must be met. At a minimum, each of those factors must be met. And then the third one, again, as the chair pointed out, is the ten percent rule, where you can only have a certain, up to a, a, a ten percent of the single-family homes in, in the town can have the accessory unit. So I, I think that while the town recognizes the need for accessory apartments, it has, the town meeting has cautioned this board that we agree that there is a need, but that need has to be with very limited circumstances and regulation. The proposed accessory apartment in this case doesn't meet the minimum standard in the bylaw, in a couple of different ways. First off, is the debate we've been having a little bit about whether or not the proposed accessory apartment must be within the dwelling as it existed in August of nineteen eighty-two. I think that the board has it right that the, the, the bylaw couldn't be clear. It says, a dwelling in which the accessory apartment is to be located has to be in existence and occupied as of August first nineteen eighty-two. So that's subsection A, and I believe the other subsections also address that. Another reason why I think that is the correct interpretation is because if you look at the bylaw as a whole, it says right in it that we are trying to preserve the single-family characteristics of the neighborhood while allowing for these accessory uses. And so the way we're gonna do that is make sure if you have an accessory apartment, it's within the existing building that you already have. And I believe that the person here tonight who has an existing in-law apartment has it within the existing structure and not one that was added. So I don't believe that the design complies with subsection A of the, of, of, of the accessory use bylaw. With respect to subsection B, which is the calculation of the gross square footage, I can tell you that when I looked at the assessor's card that was provided by the Wyes', [spelled phonetically], what I saw was that they were being very selective about what parts of the gross or adjusted square footage they wanted to use in their calculation. For example, the card says that with respect to the basement, unfinished basement, there's eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet, and then there's an adjusted area of a hundred and seventy-two, which I think, what the Wyes's position is, represents a hundred and seventy-two square feet of finished space in the basement, which therefore can be counted towards the gross square footage and isn't part of the unfinished basement. Number one, that's not what these figures mean at all. These are assessor's figures for what the value, the adjusted value of that unfinished basement would be for assessor's purposes, not for purposes of determining square footage. Number two, it's curious that he takes the credit for the hundred and seventy-two square feet there. But then, when there's an adjustment made for the second floor, it is half-story. The half-story gross is eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet. The adjusted gro, the adjusted space for that same space is four hundred and twenty-nine square feet. And yet, in his calculations, he includes all of the eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet, not the adjusted amount. So if he wants the benefit of using the adjusted calculations in connection with his square footage for the basement, he should also, when he's calculating and using the measurements for the upstairs, see that that adjustment is also applied. And that would significantly reduce the gross square footage of the building, of the, of the dwelling, of the dwelling, which is what the definition requires here. So the way we calculated, it was simply to add the amount of square footage in the dwelling, the part where people live, the first floor, which was a thousand twelve square feet, and the second floor, which is the eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet, to get to the figure that's in my letter of, I believe it was eighteen hundred, approximately eighteen hundred square feet, eighteen hundred and seventy square feet. That is the area, the way I interpret, the way I read subsection B of the bylaw, you take the dwelling, the, the places where people live, and you take, or the gross square footage of that, and you take out from that any unfinished areas or any accessory uses, like a porch, for example, or a garage. So that's where I got the eighteen seventy, and if you take eighteen seventy, one-third of that is six hundred and twenty-three square feet. And he doesn't still meet the criteria, which is why he may be seeking a variance on subsection B. Because I think that's what the application says, we're seeking a variance on subsection B. And I'll get to the reason why they're not entitled to that variance, I'll have a ruling, they're entitled to that variance in a minute. But just with respect to whether or not this particular subsection is complied with, I don't think that they can establish the square footage necessary to meet the gross square footage in order to get the accessory unit. The next sections that I believe apply here relate to section, subsection E, which is the subsection that deals with off-street parking. There hasn't been any talk tonight about this. But in fact, the bylaw says, let me pull it out, the exact language. All motor vehicles owned or maintained by occupants of the building in which the accessory apartment is located shall be parked off the street. And the location and appearance of all additional off-street parking shall not adversely affect the adjoining properties of the neighborhood or the single-family appearance of the neighborhood in general. And, this is a key one, will cause no change to the front yard parking, if any, as it existed on August first nineteen eighty-two. Well, we all know, just look at the drawings that they've submitted. They clearly intend to change the appearance of the front yard parking area on this property. They wanna add a whole other driveway on the other side of their property, which is completely opposite from the side where they live, where their existing driveway is. So it changes the existing parking area, it adds to it, it changed it from August of eighty-two. And by doing that, it also affects the appearance of whether or not this is a single-family house. Now you've got two driveways. What are people gonna think when they're walking, when they're driving down the street? There's two apartments in here, there's two separate houses in here. And additionally, it does have an adverse effect on the adjoining properties. Take a look at my submission. There's a beautiful tree right there where they're gonna put this driveway, and they're gonna, they wanna take that tree down. This is a scenic road, it's a designated scenic road in Reading. And what they wanna do is knock that tree down and put an asphalt driveway there instead. To me, that affects the adjoining properties, and it affects the abutters. And it's a big concern of the neighborhood, and, and Mr. and Mrs. Webb, who live in the house right next door to that tree. Now, I, there was a hearing by community planning where they, where they approved the takedown of the tree because they have jurisdiction over the scenic road there. Actually, they didn't approve the takedown of the tree. They approved, I think, the curb cut in the area. And there were some discussions, and I believe the town engineer submitted a memorandum saying that it wasn't a public shade tree. Well, I beg to differ with the town engineer, he's not qualified to make that determination. Chapter eighty-seven of the Mass General laws defines a public shade tree as a tree that is on the public way or bordering the public way. And if you look at this tree, it's clearly bordering the public way. And that same statute doesn't give the authority for the town engineer to make that determination. Instead, it gives it to the tree warden in the town. And there's no evidence in this case that the tree warden has made any such determination about that tree. Be that as it may, even if all those other boards had the authority and did what they could do, that doesn't mean that taking down that tree doesn't affect negatively or adversely this neighborhood and doesn't give this board the right to say, in its own findings, that regardless, if you want a special permit, you must meet the criteria of subsection E relating to off-street parking, and you can't do that the way you wanna do it here. You can't do it by putting in a second driveway that tears down that tree, that changes the characteristics of this from a single-family into a two-family, and that adds more parking than was there in the front yard prior to August first of nineteen eighty-two. So under subsection E, I don't think they have the right. So in order to get that, they probably would need a variance to do that. Again, as I'll tell you in a few minutes, they don't have the evidence to get a variance. Again, as I'll tell you in a few minutes, they don't have the evidence to get a variance. I think that that covers the reasons that they are not entitled to the special permit. The gross square footage, the, the fact that the accessory use is not in the apartment, is not, I'm sorry, is not in the existing dwelling, and all of the problems that they have with the off-street parking that I've just referred to. Now, to the extent that the criteria have not been met, I think the board does have the authority to issue a variance. By the way, I do, I also want to address, and I don't know if now is the time to do it or after I'm done with my initial presentation, some of the points about, that Mr. Conwin, Conwin made about the precedent that this board has in the past. Maybe now's a good time to do that. And, and, and they did, they did make a very, very good presentation and submitted a lot of information. But let's look at the detail, just as somebody on the board said a few minutes ago, let's look at the detail of those decisions. The first decision, the 2012 decision, does not support the claim that, that the interpretation is that an accessory use can be outside of the dwelling. The reason for that is because there's a specific finding in that decision that says, we find that it is within the dwelling. So someone on the board must have seen something in those plans and then convinced the other members of the board to make that specific finding. Number two, there was no variance granted in that decision whatsoever. That entire decision was a special permit decision. So the idea that you can, you know, that there's a special permit versus a variance and that that support, that case supports it, does nothing of the kind. That case only deals with special permit, the decision in that case is only a special permit, not a variance decision. The second case, the 2013-14 case, which many of you on the board probably were wrestling with when you had that case, is the one where they tore down the house and put up a new one. Interestingly, when you read that decision and you focus on the details, this board did not grant a special permit for the accessory use outside of the building. In fact, it granted a variance. It only granted a variance for the, for the house to be, for the accessory use. So when you read that decision, again, I don't think that decision stands for the proposition that you can have a, an accessory use apartment outside of a dwelling and still have it comply with the bylaw. That's not what that case says. What it says in fact is you don't have a house that complies with the bylaw, so we're going to have to give you a variance to let you do that. But the reasons that this board gave the variance in that case, which are the reasons that, that Mr. Wise wants one here, unfortunately, had someone appealed that case, I think the board would have been overturned. The reasoning in that case was that the health of the owner and the financial circumstances were such that it would be, that it was a hardship for them. There was a financial hardship and a health hardship, and that was the finds, that were the findings in that case as to why the variance was permissible. Unfortunately, case law and the statute itself of variance in Massachusetts says that the only hardships that are applicable are hardships owing to the land, not hardships owing to the financial circumstances of the owner of the property, not hardships that, that owe to the health of the owner of the property. And I have two cases that I've cited in my paper that both specifically say that very point. They say, it is correct that the health of Bruin's father, in this case Bruin was the, was the person applying for the variance. And this is an appeals court case from 1984. It is correct that the health of Bruin's father and his financial situation and any other considerations unrelated to the underlying real estate are irrelevant to the board's inquiry on the question of substantial hardship. So all of the evidence that's been presented relating to Mr. Wise or Mrs. Wise's parents is completely irrelevant as to whether or not they're entitled to a variance, and that is not a hardship that this board can consider. The fact that his parents or her parents may not have the financial means to have their own apartment somewhere else, again, regrettable, but not relevant to this board's decision about whether or not a variance can be granted. In Massachusetts, it's very difficult to get a variance, and it's supposed to be. Because the idea is, you've got zoning bylaws, the town passed them for a reason, and you really have to establish that because of something unique about your land, those zoning bylaws are causing you a hardship. Well, that's not the issue here. We know that the land is usable, they have a single-family home on it right now. They're using it. And the cases that I've cited in my presentation all say that, that you have to show that the topography of the land, the shape of land, something about the land is creating such a hardship that you, that it renders the property essentially useless if the zoning bylaws are enforced. And you don't have that here at all. So there is no basis for this board to grant any variances. And because the Wise's cannot meet the six, the criteria, at least three of them that I could see, for the issuance of a special permit, and then, and can't prove that they're, that they have a hardship that entitled to them a variance to those specific subsections, this board has to vote to deny.
Is there anybody else who would like to, okay, I will ask the Wise, the petitioner, if they would like, if, and if we can keep it, you know.
I'll keep brief.
Brief, yeah, rebuttal to that, to any of the comments.
The specific points that were made, I'll just address as I see them. First and foremost is counsel's incorrect with regard to the 2013 decision. A variance was granted under 4.3.2.8.2A of the zoning bylaw, so it was a variance for an accessory apartment. And with regard to hardship, if you look at the Board of Appeals, great decision because it lays out what the petitioner saw and what you based it on. So if you look at the circumstance, circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, topography, the reason is that Mr. Ingram had a non-conforming lot, that it didn't, the home didn't provide enough workable space for an accessory apartment, and he further explained it's most economically feasible to reconstruct the original home, making it large enough to incorporate the proposed accessory apartment. It's exactly the same variance argument, which I don't think we need, but I think that we're making. And then with regard to the hardship, the hardship here is that they wanted to have a, a family environment where the parents could live with the children and provide care, that there was financial hardship with both the folks that were going to be living there and the folks that owned the home. Those are the exact, essentially, reasons that we are seeking a variance, which again, I don't think we need, but to that point, we certainly meet the criteria. And, and with regard to section E, I don't think it came up because I, I don't think it's, it's pertinent in this situation, but I will discuss it. What that section says, that all motor vehicles owned or maintained by the occupants of the accessory apartment shall be parked off the street, and the location and appearance of all additional off-street parking shall not affect adversely the character of the neighborhood. So what basically it's saying is, you can't change the parking that was there, which we're not doing. What was there in 82 is what's staying there now. We're going to add additional off-street parking for the accessory apartment, which is exactly what section E contemplates. We're not changing the 82 parking, we're adding additional parking for the accessory apartment as you're supposed to by the bylaw. And, and with regard to E, just a couple other quick points. The scenic nature of the neighborhood has already been dealt with by CPDC. They found that it wouldn't adversely affect the character or quality of this as a scenic road. And the, the shade tree is a non-starter. It was determined by the town engineer, who is allowed to make that determination based on the statute, the tree warden can delegate to whomever he wants to, to make that decision. It was made by the town, you could go out there tomorrow and cut it down. It's got nothing to do with the driveway. The driveway has to be there, the selectmen have approved the curb cut there, and engineering has said, this is the best place for it. So the driveway's got to go where the driveway's got to go. Trust me, we tried. We looked at every option as far as putting this driveway someplace else and not taking the tree down. We went to the abutters and said, we'll put in a row of trees, we'll pay for it, you pick them, you know, whatever you want to sort of pretty this up, we'll do it. And to say that, well, it's going to look like it's a two-family because there are two driveways, drive around that neighborhood. In our submission, I think we showed pictures of maybe five or six homes that have two driveways. I mean, this is a common, common thing in Redding. It's, it's not at all out of the ordinary. This driveway, just like other Colonials, two driveways, one for parking, one for, you know, whatever people are going to do with it. It's not leading to a front door, it's not directly, you know, in front of a, a second apartment. It looks like a Colonial with two driveways. We have two driveways everywhere, we have circular driveways everywhere. That's not uncommon. You know, to say having a second driveway adversely affects an abutter, I think is a stretch. You know, if you go down that street, every person that's got a driveway, it's, you know, it's three, four, five feet off the neighbor's property. All the setbacks are made, their driveway is another probably 12 or 15 feet away from that. Honestly, I, you know, I think they're, they're sort of, sort of grasping at that, and I think the issue's been dealt with by CPDC, and we're certainly meeting the bylaw with regard to section E.
Okay. Thank you.
The calculations, I think, maybe we should talk a little bit about, and to be honest, math is not my strong suit, and, and Tom was, was the number cruncher, so if, if you're comfortable, would you address those points?
I'm comfortable. Can I maybe say something quickly before?
Go ahead.
You know, I'm not a lawyer or politician, so, excuse me, and there's a lot of legalities.
If you could identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Juffrey, I'm an abutter of this property, I live at 189 South Street on the, on the other side.
Can you say your name again?
Gary Juffrey.
Can you say your last name?
Sure. So, I mean, the legalities of it, and I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of different interpretations of the bylaws, which I don't understand or pretend to understand, other than some precedents, and I guess there's a disagreement of whether precedent means anything. To me, I guess it would mean a little, it's kind of saying, we're going to say yes here and change our minds here, or change, have a different interpretation, so you guys all need to figure that out. But this gentleman was speaking for the neighborhood, but you don't speak to me. So you may speak for, for that gentleman who I've never met before. But from my perception, the, the, it doesn't sound like it's going to adversely affect the, the neighborhood, the, the way it looks. It seems like I've seen a model of a home, it looks like it's going to be a big, beautiful, new, constructed Colonial house right next to mine. That makes me feel pretty good, you know, I like having nice homes in a neighborhood. As far as him bringing in his in-laws to live there, I think that's wonderful. It sounds like it's been done before, it sounds like there's limitations on how many can be done in Redding, which I respect, and I think that, that should be looked at. As far as the square footage, which you guys are about to talk about, I'm going to take a step back. But as far as my perception of the view of the neighborhood, the new park that went up across the street, Sturgis Park, which Tom was involved with, contributed to, donated to, they had to cut down a couple of trees there, public trees, not in someone's personal property, you know, and, and that's unfortunate. However, I look across the street now, we have this new beautiful park, and new trees were planted, so sometimes you do have to take down old things to build up, do nicer things. So again, from, from my vision, I, I welcome his in-laws, I welcome a new, beautiful house in a neighborhood. I think it'll look great.
Thank you. Want me to just ask if there's anybody else who would like to speak?
No, I'm fine.
Nope, you're fine, anybody, all set. Okay, if we have nobody else, then Mr. Wise can.
Things I don't know.
So, yeah, we put together for the benefit of us, and, and we were going to do a PowerPoint, but I said it's probably overkill. The good thing is it contains the analysis that Tom and I did. Would you guys like to look at that section? It's the same thing that's in the paper, but it just laid out maybe a little bit more clearer, it shows exactly the alignment to appendix C and things along those lines.
You're talking page, page four and five, the gross and net square footage calculations?
Yes, sir.
I think we've got them.
Okay.
Unless any, any other board members need any, I think we're okay looking at what we've got here.
So as we've talked about briefly before, we, we looked at the 1982 assessor's documents. And there's, what it says there, and I think one of the key points here, is there's a difference between gross and net, pure and simple. In a Cape, you have a much different number for gross on the top floor than you do for net. Gross is wall-to-wall, regardless of how many crawl space or otherwise there is, it's outside wall to outside wall. Net takes into account and removes all the crawl space that you can't use and things along those lines, right? So fundamentally, that's what you're seeing in this document, is a difference between gross and net. What you have there in, in the, in the document is the gross for the town record, directly tied to appendix C, which is the assessor's record as of October 1982, going down a line, 1,012, 130 through 74, 858, 858, directly from the assessor's record. You can see a direct parallel between the two if you put those two things side by side. And all I've done in this, if you want to see it, is do that, okay? So I'm happy to have this one out. The next set is the net, and this isn't selective use of, of it necessarily, but that's what that next line is, the net of what is usable space. So in the case of the, of the base floor, there is no crawl space, there's no net, there's no gross to remove because gross more or less equals net, so that's why you have 1,012 there. You go across then to the fully enclosed or finished enclosed porch, it's part of the house. It's not an accessory use, it's, it's part of the house. That has a net of 91 versus the gross of 130, okay? The FGR, looking up online, FGR stands for finished garage. The finished garage had a gross of 374 and a net of 150. There was finished garage, it wasn't unfinished garage, it was finished garage, which meant there was usable space in there. The finished half-story is where the Cape versus Colonial and all the crawl space and all the stuff that's unique about a Cape comes in, and that's where there's a big difference, 858 for 429. And the last thing is the unfinished basement. The great majority is unfinished. However, as is noted in the notes, there is paneling and wallpaper, as Mr. Hackett noted, there is paneling and wallpaper in the basement indicating a finished portion of the basement. And the finished portion of the basement is the 172 square feet. So to get to gross, the bylaw says that you have to, the gross floor area of the one-family dwelling of which it is part, exclusive of any garage, unfinished, so the unfinished portion of the basement, all of the garage, whether finished or unfinished, unfinished portion of the basement, any shed or accessory use structure attached to or part of one-family dwelling. So those are exclusive. So the garage, net or gross is excluded, that's why it's zero, and you see in that, in this thing. The base area, the main floor, fully gross, you get the full gross of that, because it's a gross calculation we're talking about, not the net calculation. That's the 112. The enclosed porch, again, it's a grossed calculation, not a net calculation, so you get the 130 of the enclosed porch. The half-story, again, a gross versus net, so you get the 858. And finally, the finished, unfinished basement has a finished portion, so you get to include that in the gross calculation as well, which gives you the 172, which leads to the 2172, divided by three is 724. That's where those numbers came from. It's all about gross versus net, respectfully, I think they're misunderstanding net and what those numbers are.
Okay, thank you.
With all due respect to Mr. Wise and his calculations, none of which I dispute, the regulation, the section B that he's talking about, doesn't have the word net anywhere. It says one-third of the gross floor area. It doesn't use net for anything. And so what the board should do is look at the net of everything that is the living, that's the dwelling where people live. People don't live in a porch with no heat. The porch is a porch, it's not the dwelling. And I think that's what this refers to when it says you are supposed to look at the dwelling exclusive of garage, unfinished basement, shed, or other accessory use structure attached to or part of the one-family. A porch is an attached-to-accessory-use structure, in my reading of it. So if you do it that way, and in terms of the basement, I don't know what the evidence is about whether 172 square feet of it is finished or unfinished. But you look at the gross, and, and I don't think that when you look at the gross, you have to take out the gross amount of the unfinished basement that's listed there. If you want to use the assessor's card to do it, I'm not saying that's the way you're supposed to. If you wanna use the assessor's card to do it, I'm not saying that's the way you're supposed to do it. I think actually, there should be an engineering drawing that should be submitted, and a calculation done by an engineer based on an engineering drawing about these numbers. But if you're gonna use the assessor's map or the assessor's card, you go to the line that says total gross area, because that's what the bylaw says you're supposed to do. Look at the gross area.
So, I'll make one other additional point. When you're calculating gross in a house, and you do the calculation with basements, the only part you include in the gross calculation of a house is the finished portion of a basement. It's standard procedure, regardless, right? The other thing with regards to the porch, if you look at the diagram in the, in the assessor's record, the porch is actually the, the mudroom, the breezeway. It's what connects the, the drug, the garage to the house, it's part of the house.
I think the distinction there is a finished porch versus an unfinished porch, and in this case, it is a finished porch.
Finished porch, yes.
If it were an unfinished porch, it would be different. But it is fully enclosed and, you know, four, four-season.
And I have no idea what a finished garage is, but if it's finished, let's throw in. Have you ever seen a finished garage or that? I've never seen that notation before, I don't even know, know what that is.
It doesn't say finished or unfinished, it just says you exclude the garage in the bylaw.
When I did my calculations, I, I'll tell you, I came up with 1,888 gross, gross square footage. And that is the sum total of the 858 twice for the first and second floors gross, wall-to-wall, even though it's not habitable. Plus, the, and I threw in 172 for a finished portion of the basement, which I had questioned too. But even if I do that, it only comes out to be 888, 1,888 square feet. The, the garage is not intended to be part of this calculation.
We took it out.
It's not, the garage is not.
No, yeah, we zeroed it out.
And the same, and the, if you look at the assessor's card, the, the porch was done over a period of 20 years, where it was first just a pouring, a, a platform pouring, then it had a roof, then it had screens, then it was enclosed to a, to a fault. I don't know if it was done with permits, because I didn't see the, the ref, the references to the permits aspect of it. So I don't know if it's living area. The assessor is not the determining individual to determine what's livable and what's not livable. The, the person determining that is sitting right here tonight. But if he's never called out to do it, how would he know? And does the assessor go to the building inspector and say, is this, is this livable space in this particular residence? No, they don't do that. So there's a question of what is, what is, what is considered to be the livable space in part be of the bylaw again?
So, one point, two points of clarification on that. One is you can't do 858 times two, because the first 858 is the finished half-story on the top, the second 858 is the basement. You're missing the, the middle floor of the base area, right? So the, the basement, if you look at it very clearly, its UVM is unfinished basement, that's 858. You can't include that, I agree, it's unfinished, I mean, that's whatever. So you have the 858 of the, of the top floor or the finished half-story. You have the 1, 1,012, not 858, 1,012 of the base area, which is the base footprint of the house.
The first floor.
The first floor.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me redo my calculation.
You got the base area.
Card calls it FEP.
Right. So what you're saying, you have the base area, the finished, the, the porch for 130.
Yep.
Right, you're not counting the garage at all.
Not at all.
The finished second floor or half-story.
Yep.
858.
Yep.
Unfinished basement, you said.
Finished portion of the unfinished basement.
The finished portion of the unfinished basement, which is 172.
Yep.
And then you have your total, and then the third, now.
Correct.
Well, if I do that, it comes up to be 1,952 feet.
So, so, what, I'm gonna pull out a calculator, just frankly, and I'll show, can I, oh, can I approach, John?
Sure.
Yeah.
Here's, here's what I drew up. It's all Excel, so it's calculated formulas to get to the numbers.
Okay.
You have the 1,012, you have the finished, and that's what FEP stands for, finished enclosed porch of 130. The finished half-story of 858, the finished portion of the basement of 172, leads us to 2172.
That's what, it sounds like there's just some addition.
Yeah, and I, I did not include the enclosed porch.
Okay.
Because that was, that was not there in, in.
In 1982.
Yes, it was.
It wasn't finished at that time.
Yes, it was.
Not in.
Look, I.
They call it FEP.
They call it FEP on the document, that is the official assessor's record. They don't call it, there is unfinished enclosed porch too, if you look through all the, the record types. They specifically call it FEP.
FEP, finished enclosed porch.
Finished enclosed porch.
And is that what you're calling the breezeway, that connects the two?
Breezeway, mudroom, yep.
Okay.
You can see that in the picture as well. If you look at the, that assessor's record on the top right-hand side is a, is a picture, a, a mock-up drawing of the house, that shows the garage, the FEP, the base, the basement, and the finished half-story.
It's still not living area, with all due respect. It's part, it's an accessory use structure to the dwelling. And I, it's interesting, if you look at the chart, how selective Mr. Wise is about what he brings over to the adjusted gross. For example, he brings the full enclosed porch of 130 all the way to the end, even though the net is 91, according to the assessor.
Because it's a gross calculation. Right, we're not talking about that. It's a gross calculation.
That's what.
Sorry.
Be a little civil there.
Yes. It's the bylaw, I think you had mentioned, it's the bylaw gross calculation.
Gross calculation of the dwelling.
We, we could sit here, we could discuss this, we can go back and forth, and we, people take a look at the numbers and stuff. Personally, you, you get in, you can get confused on, I usually look to the code enforcement officer, the building inspector, he will look at the numbers, and it's just, he looks at it and says, okay, fine, they meet it, they don't. They add up or they don't add up. He would, you know, he goes out every day and calculates enclosed porch. Yes, that's a living space. Who we'd argue with, that's what it is.
If that's, if that's determined to be a mudroom.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can say that that's not, it's probably the most used space in my house.
No. The, the, is working for you now, John, or you still have a question about the?
I still, I mean, the, the difference is minor, but the, the minor difference also reflects that it does not meet, it's, it's in excess of the 130.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, you'd have to have, I'd have to, I'd have to do the calculations again, but I mean, the, the difference on some of this, even, even if you take out the, what's, what's in the finished basement again, I, I don't know, that's all disputable. Part of it is.
Well, it's, it's maybe disputable in your personal mind, but I, I usually look in this particular case to the building inspector. Is it disputable to him? No.
I don't, I don't believe that this is the only issue.
I don't want to speak for you, but.
This is not the only, for me, this is not the only issue in this particular case.
No, no.
So, I, you know, I, I don't wanna concentrate on this when I think there are, I shouldn't say bigger fish before I, but I mean, but there are other aspects of, of the request that we have to.
I think where we, where we started, if I recall, that one of the first things we discussed was, you know, based on the criteria, Glenn, are you fine with it? And I, I thought it was yes, but you had an issue with the other things that we're talking about. The setbacks and everything else was, I, I didn't, I mean, maybe we just, you know.
At the risk of letting Glenn speak for himself.
Well, it's, it's, as people bring up things, obviously, you can go back and, you know, have a change of mind if you needed to.
So, go ahead, Glenn, please.
Yeah.
So, I, I wasn't questioning the square footages of those particular areas, but I did not see them. I, I would, I would say a finished porch is not an accessory structure, it's part of the principal structure. So, if it is in fact a finished porch, that would be included in the calculations. The, I'd have to look at the basement area to see if that's truly a finished portion of the building or not, but that's 172. I thought there were enough, other things wrong with the application, that, that minor difference in the calculations wouldn't make that much of a difference. I wasn't, in all the years that we've been here, I never looked, we never looked at paragraph E.
Well.
As it was presented to us tonight.
Right.
And I think there's some good merit into the requirements of that, that section. So, that, that's a problem area with me, that, that for 20 years, for 20 years, we, we never looked at it as being different than the parking that was required in 198, that was there in 1982. So, that's, that would affect a lot of, a lot of these projects. And it's there, it's there in black and white, so.
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's, unfortunately, it's, it's a valid point.
In four months, it may not be there anymore.
And I still, and I still say that the accessory structure should be part of the existing dwelling, not into, not into the proposed construction, unless we get a variance from that.
Right.
The board, the applicant, I've always explained to the applicants that they need a special permit, number one, to be, to, to get the accessory apartment, but also, in many cases, or in some cases, they'd have to apply for variance from the requirements of that.
Of the 1982.
And it's primarily not being either the right square footage, which the board has allowed, accessory apartments to exceed the one-third or the 750 square feet a number of times, not, not by a lot, but in most cases, most of it was in the existing dwelling, maybe a portion of it was outside of that, so. So that being said, yeah, there may be a little discrepancy in the square footages, but I think that's minor, according to the other issues that are, that are before the board.
Right.
Can I just touch on E again? And I think it's never, I, I don't know why it's never, well, it's never come up, because there's only been four of these in the last eight years, but it, it talks about not changing the parking as it was in 1982, but also allows for additional off-site parking. There are two parts to that as I read it. We are not touching 82, we are getting additional parking, that's already been approved by, at, at least by way of the curve cut.
Can I go through that with you?
Yeah, sure.
Because that, as Glenn said, that's something that we've never touched upon, and if Glenn thinks it's an issue, I wanna make sure that we understand the reading of that section and how it might or might not apply, so that we can take it into consideration or choose not to. All right. So, I'll paraphrase a little bit, bit of it, but I'll put some emphasis where I think emphasis is necessary. So, vehicles owned by occupants of the building in which the accessory apartment is located shall be parked off-street one, and the location and appearance of additional, all additional off-street parking, additional off-street parking shall not adversely affect the adjoining properties. So I think what that section goes directly to is the proposed off-street parking, not the existing off-street parking.
Agreed.
The proposed off-street parking.
No, I agree, I'm just saying that it allows off-street, additional parking.
It, it does, but there's a, you know, substantially more detrimental type analysis there. Adversely affect the adjoining properties in the neighborhood. And so, we have presented to us for consideration, to give as much weight as the board feels is necessary, an objection under that section for that purpose, if I'm understanding Counsel's presentation, of course, earlier.
The only thing I was addressing is Glenn said changing the 82 parking. I just wanted to make it clear, we're not, per this, per the bylaw, we're not changing 82, we are proposing additional parking.
All right, so let me, so let me go on, so, so we have that issue, okay? And then we have, and shall not, I mean, may never adversely affect the adjoining properties in the neighborhood, or the single-family appearance of the neighborhood, and I understand you've already talked about other single families in the neighborhood that have various shapes and numbers of, of driveways. And I, I haven't driven by the property, but maybe the board can, if any board members have. And will cause no change to the front yard parking area, if any, as it exists and on August 1, 1982. So that's your point, is that end of the, of Section E is unchanged from the existing parking under your, under your analysis, all right? Okay, all right. All right, now I think I understand what you, why we're considering it. Thanks.
And one other comment on the parking that I think is worth noting is that we do have the driveway going up the side yard of, to the side of the accessory, so that they can park that car back tucked behind the building. So it is not in the front yard. It's, the car, when it's parked, will be, you know, 30 feet back off of the street. So I think that goes a long ways toward meeting the criteria of not being adversely, not adversely affecting. And then I think the other point that's worth noting is that we have already agreed to provide additional landscape screening, so if they don't want to look at a car, we can put a row of Evergreens there, so the car is 30 feet back from the street, tucked behind the structure itself, and we are willing to put landscape screening on the other side of it.
Do we know that? Thank you for amplifying that. And, and I, I will, I will note too, that it is not this board's duty to review driveways and to review the shade trees and the cutting down of that. That is another entity in town that does do that, and it sounds like they have.
Several other entities.
Yeah. Several, yeah.
May I respond?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, with respect to the last comment, that is true, the other boards do have authorities to do what they do. I'm not sure that the board, that the board of selectmen who initially approved the second driveway here, I, I think that's gotta go back to them, and I'll tell you why. There was no public notice of that meeting, and we have already been to the selectmen about that, and were told that they're gonna, they know they're gonna have to have a second meeting, because there were changes made, there were changes made to the drawings, and that the initial approval of that driveway was based on the drawings that they looked at back then. And in fact, as I understand it, they sent an email to Mr. Wise to that effect. So, I think that that second driveway is still in play, let's say. Regardless of whether or not the town, the, the board of selectmen had the right to approve or disapprove that driveway, this board has been empowered to grant special permits for accessory use apartments, and, and you have authority, based on that bylaw, to determine whether or not a proposed design, in this case, violates or meets the criteria of here. And I don't know how, and I agree with the building inspector here. How can anybody interpret the last part of Section, subsection E? That you can't change the front parking area from what it looked like in 1982 to anything to mean other than you can't change the front parking area. You can add additional parking, put it around the back. You can take the existing driveway, which is in the front yard, make it longer, but you can't otherwise change or add more driveways. And that's consistent with the intent here, which is keep this looking like a single family. We don't want a lot of driveways, different parking lots in front of your house.
It's more difficult.
I, I think a property.
In a community like Redding, or bordering communities, Winchester, Lexington, whatever, when you have something that's in black and white, that you think you got all nailed down until you get into a court of law, and then you have opposing attorneys fighting back and forth between the wording in the bylaw. The intention, which is what I started out with, the intention and purpose when town meeting granted this was for a specific reason. Unfortunately, it got tagged with black and white stuff in the bylaw that everybody argued back and forth. And, you know, I, I think that the, what your proposal is, is great. If there was no kitchen in there, and there was a shared kitchen like we talked about way back when, it's, this, this whole thing, in essence, goes away, but it doesn't, because you wanna make an accessory apartment, which is a second dwelling unit. And that's the part of it that I am so dearly against. Until we get a change in the bylaws, if we get a change in the bylaws that says we're gonna allow two-family structures to be converted, to convert capes and ranches to two-family structures, fine, because the, because the town meeting and the selectmen and all the other boards say that this is what we wanna do in the town of Redding. Great, when it comes before this board, that's what this board will do. It'll look at what the black and white says, make the interpretations they see it, and move forward. But it is, it is difficult to sit here and, and make those judgment calls, because with less land and with more available funds, people wanna do more with their houses. And who are we to sit here and say no to somebody, except what we are empowered to do? And that is, we are the zoning board of appeals. So we're supposed to look at this stuff and say, if there's an easy way of, if there's a way of getting. So, we're supposed to look at this stuff and say, if there's an easy way of, if there's a way of getting, giving you an alternative to what's in the bylaw, we will do our very best to do that without breaking circle rules. And that's what I think this board is, is trying to do.
Can I note just, just two things quickly? I think what, what we're asking for is for you to make a, a black and white determination as you have in the past. I mean, i- if we came in here and said, geez, we're gonna knock it down, we're gonna build a new house, we're gonna, bigger than what was there, and we're gonna put an accessory apartment in, presumably, we would be allowed to do that if we were following what this board has done. And, and the second thing I, I'd like to note is that Tom could have said, you know what, I'm not gonna put a stove in. We'd never be here. To, to put himself through this, I, you know, I think the board really should commend him, and talk about letter of the law. This could have been done a year ago, but to be honest, he looked at it, we looked at it, and thought, based on what had been done in the past and what we were proposing, this is what the bylaw was intended for, and I still believe that, wholeheartedly.
Counselor, if you go back to, because you keep bringing up the precedent aspect of it, if you go back and look at the last condition in the Whittier property, would you read that?
I did, I said, we would offer conditions.
And what is the condition?
While he's looking that up, I'll make.
I, I know what the condition is.
Go ahead, I.
The condition is, is when this accessory apartment changes hands, ownership, usage, that the board must be notified.
Fine, I'll do it then.
And, you know, you said, anything can be challenged, and maybe this decision should have been challenged. It wasn't challenged, so it goes through.
We can't collectively make decisions on what, something that should have been challenged, or might be challenged, or will be challenged. Either way, this, this might be challenged, who knows? I know the board doesn't, doesn't like it, trust me, but, you know, that, that's, we can't, we can't deal with that.
And, and the other thing I think is, Mr. Dreamer is right, we don't make decisions based on precedents. I think, certainly think we take them into consideration, what may be done in past cases, but each case is individualistic.
Right, but how are we to be guided?
We, we make a decision based on the merits of that case.
Okay, so, i- if we can't look, it, it should be a case-by-case basis, right? But this board always and consistently looks at past cases, every time something comes up, when there's a discussion. Always, you look to those cases for guidance where there is no other. There is an issue with interpretation of this bylaw. Where do we look? We look to the collective history of the board, we look to what the board has done in the past. Let's call it something else, let's call it guidance, instruction. I, I don't like the term precedent, it's scary as an attorney, trust me, but we have to be guided by something. There's nothing else out there. Should it have been challenged? If it was challenged and it went one way or the other, we would have even more guidance, but we don't. We are not looking for anything different than what was given in that case. In fact, we are looking for less.
That's fine, yeah. You have five members here tonight that have got the material, and they, they will vote on that if, if that is what your decision is, to have a vote tonight. There any more comments from the public on that?
One other point of clarification.
Yeah.
On the board of selectmen, yes, we did go before, yes, it was approved before, yes, due to the fact that we're shrinking the house by one foot, two inches, and only for that reason do we have to go again. The driveway's not moving. As to the point of public notice, it is a permit, not a special permit. It is a discussion with the board of selectmen, does not require public notice. No.
That's rebuttal.
Again.
Let the lawyers, let the lawyers.
That's rebuttal. There's no further comments from the public. I will close the public portion of the meeting, and I will say quickly, if we want to go through again, if there's any further comments from a board member, we would hear them. If not, I would be ready to entertain a motion, unless I hear different from the applicant.
Can we take five? So, we can speak point five?
Anybody, any member which.
I'm, I'm, yep, I'm, I'm all set.
You're, you're set, John, Si.
You just asked for five minutes?
Yeah, pending, pending them having their five minutes, let, let them come back.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Yep. Five-minute recess. Yep. You would like a, is that what you're saying?
Resess, please.
A recess for five minutes, absolutely, granted.
So, can you picture, can you picture?
Five minutes?
You don't know, I'm just a kid.
I don't see a copy of what we're supposed to talk about.
Proceed with a mo- a motion.
Motion.
Yes, and if I have no further comments from board members.
I would just like to just thought that I think we all are to be perfectly clear exactly what we're voting on. Okay, there's been a lot of discussion about various aspects of that section of the bylaws. So I'd like to make sure we all clearly understand exactly what it is we're talking about. Okay, I heard a lot of talk about calculations. Frankly, I have no problem with what you have done. I don't know how to do it better short of going out and measuring everything. The parking issue is a judgmental one, I think, for this board to deal with. The issue is whether or not a variance is or is not considered necessary. One member of the board says no, other members of the board say yes, others say maybe. Okay, so I guess I'd like to have a clear understanding, and maybe that's part of the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but a clear understanding of exactly what it is we are trying to address.
Okay, well, number one, I think in the actual legal notice, the petitioner has asked for a variance and a special permit. So we will be voting on both those aspects now whether it's the motion includes that.
But he's also made the commentary in his presentation that he does not feel a variance is required.
I think if you folks agree with me, that's an easy vote.
Well, if we were to agree with that, then you could withdraw the thing, or we could vote on it, whatever.
Okay, if then I would, you know, for the comment side, I would look to you for a motion then, if you would.
Well, that means I have to write it up, and I'm leaving for Europe in a day or two. So it's gonna be very difficult for me to do that.
I see, I see.
I would be glad to, but I just don't see, I got the time to do it.
You won't be have the kind of.
I won't be here.
Right, right. And I know David has a, Eric, would you entertain making a motion? Thank you.
Yep.
I'll take the one the next time.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yes, and.
All right, well, I move that the zoning board of appeals approve the petition of Thomas Wise, who seeks a variance and a special permit under sections 4.3.2.8.2. B. And 4.3.2.8 of the zoning bylaws in order to add an addition to the existing single-family dwelling and to create an accessory apartment as per the plans submitted by the petitioner. I made a mess here. Most recently dated May 13th, 2013, stamped by, is it? Thank you very much, sorry for that.
Yeah.
This is the, okay. Per the plot plan submitted by Bodich and Crandall, Inc., 8 Holt Street, Belmont, Mass. 02478. And certified by John W. McEachern, registered professional land surveyor, dated May 18th, 2014. And the architectural drawings sheets marked A through A11, prepared by Miller Design, LLC, 52 Statler Road, Belmont, Mass. Certified by DB Miller, registered architect, all dated beginning November 25th, 2013, to the last update dated May 6th, 2014, on condition that the rental of the accessory apartment is not allowed. And you guys are fine with that condition that?
Yeah, I think we want to step further to mimic the condition I'm with you.
Okay.
We would notify the board if it was sale, I believe.
Change of ownership.
Change of ownership.
Change of ownership.
Do you want to, do you want to motion with a special permit and the variance are one and the same?
I would like to motion that. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I will add that in my motion.
Before we go any further, the building inspector has brought up, maybe that is mine. Building inspector has brought up a valid point in that the plot plan that we just referred to, that I think we provided as part of our submission tonight, has no dimensions on it.
I'm gonna make sure we refer them to the right plot.
So if this is the, that's, this is the plot plan that Eric just referenced in his motion.
Okay.
Dated May 18th, 2014, stamped by John McEckren.
May 18th, 2014 is the latest I have, and it's noted underneath, dimensions added?
Seventeen point five.
Dimension added.
What were they, are they added to the structure, or is there another plan?
The dimensions are.
I don't have, I don't have my original letter of denial.
No. Where's the dimensions?
I believe the dimensions that were added were these side dimensions that I had questioned before.
There should be dimensions on the structure.
Yeah, no, they did not dimension that on the plot plan. I cannot tell you that.
Plan dimensions are on the architectural.
But the certified plot plan should have dimensions on it, not the architectural. I mean, the architectural should match the certified plot plan.
Hey, what you're really talking about is that there's, there's no dimensions on the addition to the existing garage. There's no dimensions on the proposed addition to the house. All that's done on the certified plot plan is the setback controls.
Right.
Dimensional controls.
Right.
And you, and we have.
I'm asking if there's another plan on it that has those dimensions, because this.
Just, just the architectural plans.
That.
They say mirror, you know, what the initial is gonna be.
And I think we've always required that the plot plan that's referred to as part of the decision be complete.
Because this is what is kept. The architectural plans are non-necessary.
You want to condition it on, you know, the plot plan matching that, I mean, it's not, I don't know that it's always required. A plot plan typically is to show the location of finished product for your foundation plan, and your architecturals are what deal with the building. So that's the package that was submitted. That's, I mean, typically, that's how things would work.
But that's Glenn's call, and I can't speak for Glenn. I'm not gonna speak for Glenn, so.
Typically, the dimensions are on the certified plot plan.
And that's what we've always required.
You know.
We've talked about.
They should match the architectural.
Right, we've talked about this in other cases where applicants.
We've talked about this case someplace, we've talked in this case. I know which in my, I know I've talked about.
Won't the, I mean, won't the as-built plan that's gonna have to be submitted if this is approved?
That's not part of the decision, no.
We can, if it would make the board, if it would satisfy the board, we can offer a condition that we will provide updates to this. We can certainly go back to the engineer and ask him to add additional dimensions to the drawings, if that's what you were looking for. So we're willing to include that as a condition that will put additional drawing, additional dimensions on this drawing.
And that those conditions, those dimensions will match the architectural plans submitted with the application.
There's a timing factor here, too, and I think that's why Glenn has always required that, because it's a two, two-week write-up, and sometimes your engineers can't get out in two weeks and get it no, brought back to him sufficiently in time that's recorded. So that, again, that's, the board has always done it in that particular way. Glenn has always required that.
So I just had, I had a copy of the plot plan before.
And there's none on there.
The actual building dimensions.
We've done a lot of these, which haven't had those dimensions on there. I, that's, yeah. You can go back and research it.
Okay.
Because they're picked up on the art.
No.
If it's in any consolation, we did a slide showing that. We know they all match, so it's just a matter of getting the documentation that Glenn.
I think the major concerns of this board are setbacks, curtilages, all that kind of stuff.
If this, if this fourteen foot five and a half dimension doesn't correspond to seventeen point seven five feet, what do we do then?
What fourteen and a half, what page are you on?
I'm on A5, drawing A5, it shows the foundation plan. Right, this dimension here is very, it's very explicit, fourteen foot five and a half inches.
Glenn, if I may, the engineer, I sent him my CAD drawings showing the footprint, and he used that drawing as the base for his drawing, so they do match. I mean, he used the same drawing as the base for his.
I see what you mean, the actual addition coming off the house, fourteen feet five and a half inches.
Right.
If it does not agree with.
With this setback of seventeen point seven five?
Well, then, he's, he's got an issue with you.
Yeah, I mean.
Obviously.
So, so we're all done, right? So, so we, we don't have a valid.
Nope.
Plot plan. So we're coming back, start all over again, if it's off a half an inch or an inch.
Are you saying if, if, if the architectural drawing and that plot plan are not in concert with one another when you get into it? That they don't match?
No, I.
Something changes, the square footage, if the dimension changes, the square footage changes, right? Square footage has already been under.
I think, I think we agree if we build what's in the architectural plans, it, it matches this. If something's amiss in a building, it doesn't matter what's on here, we have a problem. It'd be the same thing if you submitted a plot plan with all dimensions and something was built incorrectly.
And, and I believe, you know, with the seventeen point seven five feet they have for the side setback there.
We're gonna meet the side setback.
They've left, they've left some wiggle room for themselves in regards to the setback.
That's up to you, to the board.
I'm comfortable with the plan, and if, if the, they stop building this and they don't work, you must deal with the building inspector, and obviously, he's gonna say, well, you're not seventeen point seven five feet, you're seventeen point three feet, and you still meet the side setback, but you just have to work that out with the building inspector. You must make, meet the side setback, or you will be back here.
But that would, that'd be our foundation plan, so that would be a mistake that was made in putting a foundation in.
Right.
So we'd be subject to that no matter what we submit.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so we're.
So the motions on the floor.
The motions on the floor.
Well, I have to throw in the, the conditions for the special permit.
Okay.
No, I'll just throw those out, our normal ones. The special permit is conditioned upon the following. Petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit, and the as-built plans showing the completed construction of the new structure being submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. And I guess we'll just add that any change of ownership will require the new owner to come before the board.
Okay, and the only thing I will add to that now, in the variance request, Eric, the variance is in regards to section B?
Yes.
As opposed to section A? That's what these requested, yes.
Yes.
And I know we've done in the past just for section A, section B is asking for a variance in regards to, I guess we're talking in the square footage, et cetera.
Well, I don't know.
In the occupying of the 1982 area.
Right. I mean, I mean, I guess for me, it was not an issue, so.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what.
Right.
He drafted the motion, so that's what we're voting on.
That's what we're voting on, right.
Can I just be made clear on the, the occupancy, the end occupancy condition, can you?
Sure, I mean, I was just going by, I think we, maybe we were a little vague last time.
If there is a change in the occupancy of the accessory apartment, the board must be notified. That's verbatim from a.
Right, so I'll be happy to add to that if, if the board will, will allow me. In the event of a change of ownership, anyone seeking to avail themselves of the special permit shall come before the board and, I guess, submit an application for a special permit for themselves. Any further questions? Glenn, do you have a question?
Yeah, what are we doing about paragraph E now on the variance?
That is not a requested relief. It's not a requested relief, and.
It's, it's gonna be an issue with me, so.
So what you're saying is that they come back to the board if we vote affirmatively on their explosion?
I mean, they're not asking for it, so, I don't even know if we could hear it. Am I right, Tom?
Well, I mean, you, see, I don't agree with the separation of the variance. I don't agree with the compilation of the variance and special permit all in one motion.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need two separate motions.
Right.
But if, if we're voting on that, which has been seconded, so we're not even, should be discussing it, but the reality is you're, you're compiling everything into one big motion. So it'll be the most, the big motion fails or passes.
Right.
Well, before, before we get a second, let's get, go ahead.
It would be my opinion, now that I'm aware of paragraph E, that, that has to be addressed. Because the way it is here, the, the permit probably will not be issued, whether or not we get a special permit or a variance for other things.
So as a.
So that means, so this ball's gonna be rolling along unless, unless maybe somebody wants to continue it to address that section. So, I mean, I know the applicant's, you know, he's spending a lot of time doing this, and that's a new item on the block that's, in my opinion, is, is necessary to address, so.
Right, so as a practical matter, if the vote, if the, if the board votes to grant affirmative relief tonight, then it's likely that the building inspector's gonna have an issue with issuing a permit and would likely require that the petitioner come back before this board on, for relief on the subsection E. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Petitioner, knowing that that's possibly the case, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Knowing that that's possibly the case, do you still want us to vote on your petition tonight? Or do you want to continue it, address that issue and come back? Yes, that, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that, no, that's fine, David.
I don't wanna speak for the chair, so.
You're not, you're, you're speaking for the board, that's fine.
Is that, is that an accurate, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it is. Number one, I think we're right, it was not advertised in regards for a relief from subsection E on that, so I think it may have to come back that way. I'm, personally, I don't have an issue with, with E myself, but, no, that's me.
We've heard from the code enforcement officer that he does.
That's right, we did. And so he may have an issue, so that would be then.
I, I think this is similar to, I forget which case it was, where the board says we've, we've, are, are going to, assuming it's in the affirmative, we are going to grant the variance requested. We have reviewed all of the other provisions that are required, and, and we have no issue with it.
Right, we have a mo, we have a motion here, but keep in mind, the building inspector has noted that he has an issue with E, and it may get to the point where he would not issue a permit that you would require, and you may have to come back to the board appealing his decision.
Understood.
Okay.
So, I mean, just as a point of order, I mean, I, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm being dense, right? So if you specifically say, as you have in other rulings, that you reviewed the specific variance and all other criteria, and that you are granting the variance and the special permit, how, how can he then object when he didn't object in the first place to that item if you specifically review all those items and say you reviewed them?
And that wasn't rejected initially, there was no reason for it, and it was in the bylaw.
You know where it's going, we're gonna go to court.
I mean, that.
I mean, it's, it's, regardless of which way we vote, we're going to court, period. That's obvious here. So it doesn't make any difference what we do tonight, because it's gonna end up in court, because that's exactly what happens when there's a content, contentious situation, that's where we, where we go. I mean, the reason, the reason for having these, the reason for having these hearings is to try to work all this stuff out before you get to that point. But apparently, we can't do that, so even the, even the board itself may have trouble doing that, so I mean.
With due respect, there's nothing else we could have tried.
Okay, let's, let's play it back again. What was not in this package that we got to review was your rejection letter. I never saw, I don't recall seeing that.
That was in the initial one.
In the original.
No, but there was one for this particular case, there's one for this particular case.
We don't have it.
Now, did that take issue?
This is a new case, this is a new case number.
We don't have it.
There's, there's a letter of denial for this case.
You don't have it.
No. Was that a letter of denial in paragraph E?
No, 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 the parking was not in the file, I was made aware of that tonight. Knowing that tonight, I would have to, I'd have to address that. Did your denial.
And that's what I'm, right, and I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, if, if there's a favorable decision here tonight, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be held up when they come to me, and I'm gonna tell them they need a variance for the parking. The way I read it, the way I'm interpreting it.
Right.
That can be appealed, overturned, or granted.
And.
We're gonna act on it tonight, prove it in a basis of.
I wasn't aware of it, I made that statement, I haven't been aware of it for 20 years.
Did your denial address? One second, I'll let.
Yep.
Did your denial, you remember, did your denial.
I have it right here.
Address, did it, did it?
I have a copy of it.
Can I take a peek, please?
I have it.
Now, I don't have to answer questions, all right. So, the building inspector's denial says a special permit from section 4328 is required. That's the entire section, I would argue, including section E.
E.
So, and in your case, a variance is also required from the restrictions of 4328, too. Any ambiguity about that, that, that anybody on the board would like to offer? Or does that present an ambiguity that the board would like to ask Glenn about?
No, it's very specific.
Okay, and continue reading it, the certified, we talked about 4328, 2B.
Yep.
Right, certified plot plan dated must indicate existing and proposed structures with dimensions and setbacks.
They don't.
Dimensions of the plot plan should match the dimensions of the proposed construction drawings. I suggest that you submit an updated plot plan with additional information two weeks prior to the schedule of the ZDA hearing.
All right, so, does anybody else wanna take a look? I know he's been reading it, but anybody else wanna take a look at that?
So the variance denial is section B, is that it?
That's, that's what the variance is for, section B.
So there was no denial on section E?
No, it says, it lists the sections of an 4328.
Right, I'm just kinda confused how we apply. The bylaw hasn't changed, there was no reject, there's a specific rejection on B. There's not a specific rejection on E, but now there's gonna be?
No, not, not before the board here tonight.
No, 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 I understand, but, well, Glenn's already said it to us. That, to me, I'm, I guess we have to leave that issue aside, I'm perplexed by it.
Right, that's what we're saying, that may be an issue.
That's the ball down the road.
That may be down the road, we don't know, but.
Right.
It may come back here.
I'm just trying to wrap my head up.
To this board.
Well, right, I'm just, I'm just trying to mention this to give somebody an opportunity that they may wanna continue and cover that base.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, unfortunately, I made a mistake and didn't address paragraph E. Now I know about paragraph E, and I will address it.
But continuance is not gonna help us, 'cause it wasn't applied for, 'cause it wasn't rejected, so it's a new case either way. Right?
It's been, it's been advertised for a variance under 4328 along with.
Which is covered.
Which is covered E.
The accessory apartment, so all of the, all of the items in there could be argued, so you don't have to advertise it, you can continue it, at least in my mind, you can continue it until you get results here, rather than going out and spending another two, three months getting this whole thing done all over again.
But to that, to the same point, the board can say they reviewed 4328, inclusive of E, and if that is what you review, you agree to, you could also say you read it.
No, 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 you're missing the point. You are the per individuals that are controlling this, not the board. The board's already made a motion. The consequences of that motion, if it's in the affirmative, you've heard what they may be, which means you'd have to go back into the process again. The other option is you could ask for an extension and say, I'm gonna come back after hearing what the, the building inspector has noted, and I'm gonna address it.
But the motion is right now being written, that's what we're discussing.
It hasn't, correct, it hasn't been seconded yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been seconded.
Right, so we're suggesting, as Eric is crafting the motion, we're suggesting that he, that he lists the 4.3.2.8 inclusive of E, that perhaps he can write that into his, that he's saying it is the whole thing as it's listed in the denial.
If that's what, if that's what you want, the board is gonna vote on that specific motion that was made by Eric and eventually will be seconded, because everything is, is motioned in the affirmative. Board has always done that.
Right, we would like the board to vote on the entire section.
But I I don't see how you can if that's what, I I just assumed that was the vote, I mean, either way, it's it's coming back to Glenn, right?
Well, I I think the board, I think the way that's written, we're talking about a variance from four three two eight two, right? E is included in that, so I think the board could address that.
I think we could, I also think.
He wasn't specifically mentioned in that paragraph, but I I feel the board could address that.
Was this is this a this attached dependent to your denial or is it just your one page denial, is this their addition to your denial?
So highlighting, that's our.
No, no, the sec- the second two pages, that including.
I think the attachment was from him, the head.
It's from him.
Right, so so I'm I think it's a little bit on I I don't think it's completely accurate that the the denial did not include every section of four three eight two. Where he attached a copy of the entire section to your denial. My opinion, the board may not share it. My opinion, so.
It doesn't.
I think um I think Glenn's right and I think we can I think we can include paragraph E even though it's not specifically.
Yes.
Well, I think I think it's the board's job to make sure that if we're gonna issue the special permit, you would address all of the conditions that are under that. And if they comply, good, if they don't, we have an issue.
But here's here's the situation, the motion is made by Eric, Eric is including everything in that motion.
Right.
Including E.
E, including E.
You've already stated that you have a problem with E.
Yep.
And it's already in your denial letter. If the board votes at least four out of the five and it passes, when it comes to you, you're gonna reject it, in essence. Which is beside which is past this point on this particular motion before us tonight. The petitioner has the option of saying, if I wanted to include the rest of the things that you have, I don't have to go out and create a brand new petition before the Board of Appeals. I can go back and justify section E because that's an issue and try to get it resolved before the motion is is voted on. Because we haven't seconded it yet, if we second it, we gotta vote on it.
Okay, so.
So what.
So if I if I rephrase my train of thought here, okay, the the four three two eight two includes paragraphs A through F.
Right.
Right.
I'm asking the board to look at paragraph E when they make the decision. Because I think I think I have an issue with that. So if you vote in favor of this, I'm gonna assume that you're overlooking paragraph E.
We're looking, we're including.
Including.
Right, it should be included, it's in it's in it's in four three two eight two.
Well, taking it into consideration and finding that.
So so E is included, I'm bringing up at this meeting, I'm bringing up the point that I I think I think that we have a valid question on whether or not this this project complies with it.
John, what's the vote makeup, can I make a suggestion?
Pardon me?
What's the vote makeup? Number of votes tonight?
We need four out of five.
Mary, have a suggestion, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I I think this with all due respect to the motion, perhaps you vote on the six factors or seven factors to determine whether they've met each one of them. To the extent that there are any that the board votes that they did not meet with respect to those, then the issue is would the board be willing to grant them a variance from meeting that specific factor? And then so let's say they meet five out of the six or five out of the seven, then there are only two remaining where maybe they the board, uh the majority of the board doesn't think they complete they they get a special permit. Then the board has to vote whether or not with respect to those two, they met the requirements necessary to get a variance with respect to those two.
But we all know that if you don't meet all eight of them, whether you have a variance or not, if you have the variance, fine. If you don't have the variance, if you don't meet all eight, you don't get the uh you don't you don't get a yes. You can't say, I'll take I'll I'll, the board will allow six out of the eight, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think the law does that, that's precisely what a variance is for, a variance is is designed to give you relief from the zoning provision.
Okay, okay, section section E, are we ready to to take care of section E tonight?
So what you're saying is we're gonna go through each section and say whether we agree or not agree?
That's what he's suggesting.
No, I don't think so.
That would be the best way to preserve the record so that we know whether you're getting
Never done that.
you're voting it on a variance.
I think we vote whether they've met the criteria for an accessory apartment or they don't meet the criteria. They have asked for a variance from B, period, and that's it.
Those are the conditions that must be met.
Yeah.
Right.
Other than B, which they've asked for a variance for, you're voting that they've met all the other conditions.
Those are those are the conditions, at a minimum, those conditions must be met.
Yeah. Right.
In order to get a special permit.
And the and the motion that was put on the floor is that all the conditions have been met, including granting the variance for B and giving or or affirmatively moving forward on a special permit for the accessory apartment, which is four three two eight.
Which include Z, which include Z, yeah. Which include Z, right.
So so.
So if it's that second, the board has to the board has to move forward on that and take a vote, yes or no?
Before I before it's seconded, can I ask one point of clarification? I think we got two competing answers between the two of you about how many people had to vote to approve. John, I think you said four, David, I think you said simple majority.
Super.
Super majority.
Four out of five.
So it's four out of five. And what are the repercussions if they don't get the first?
If they do not get their uh request tonight, if if your request is denied for the variance and the special permit, I believe it's two years, is it not then?
Yes.
Two years to come back.
Unless there's a substantial change in circumstances.
Yes, unless it's a it's a complete unless it's a complete new.
Because of the variance portion of it, not because of the special permit section, not because of the variance section.
Package. Right.
There wouldn't be a new variance with the new bylaws.
We're not there.
It has that crystal ball.
Okay, so.
I mean, it, can I have five, I mean, this is kind of a significant class, it it, you know, I didn't I didn't create it, but I'd like to counsel my client on it.
It's up to the chair, did you.
Request is a literal five minute recess.
You you requested five before we're out ten, I wanna see five, period, that's it, be back here.
Nine thirty nine, nine forty.
Do that clock, quarter or not, it's nine.
Understood.
Quarter at ten, be back here. Okay, thank you, uh meetings back in order, recess is over.
Uh I think with the court's indulgence, my client would like to withdraw without prejudice. It it's just it this is now become a lot more than um what we expected from the process, there's a lot of loose ends. Uh I think a continuance is not gonna move the ball ahead, I think we need to regroup significantly um based on a lot of different things, so that's what we'd be asking for at this time.
Okay, uh just to make sure procedurally wise, we do have a motion on the table. And I believe we can ask the person who made that motion if he would like to withdraw his motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to withdraw the motion on the floor.
Okay, uh.
And then I'll make a motion to approve, or or we have I have to second.
Second his request to withdraw his motion, I think, and then we vote on that.
Second his motion to withdraw his motion. Okay.
Okay, uh I have a motion on the board second to withdraw his request of his or his motion. Uh all those in favor, raise your hand, okay, five zero zero on the request to withdraw the motion, okay.
And then I'll make a motion to let the board approve the petitioner's request to withdraw the entirety of their petition.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. Okay.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
We haven't seconded it yet, nobody have, I said we have a motion of the board, would somebody like to second that? Mr. Jurema is seconding that. Uh uh all those in favor of the petitioner's request to withdraw without prejudice, raise your hand. Thank you, and so.
Is there any paperwork that Maureen has to?
I think there is something, isn't there Maureen, that the petitioner signs something for a request without, no, nothing.
Withdraw. Just for a continuance?
Yeah, just to a continuance, we do a separate paper, yeah, so, no, I think it's reflected in the minutes, we do have to write a decision on that.
Yes, you put something together.
Just a small.
It's just for record keeping, keep things neat.
Right, record keeping on withdraw without prejudice, Eric, if you would do that, thank you, okay.
Yeah, I'll write it up. I would be happy to do that.
Appreciate your voice work, thank you.
So I I think we're through here right now, you are voted on to withdraw without prejudice. And we will write something up on that and get it into the file.
Right, who's writing that?
Eric is going to write that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. Let me just break this up, uh uh here, uh uh motion to Some minutes?
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Sorry.
Um.
Do we have some minutes?
On the on the minutes, the resets are now.
Mm-hmm, go go right ahead, I'm I'm just writing this out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, why don't we, I can do that, uh, thank you Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
Poor guy.
I'll see you. The next meeting, maybe I won't come to that.
The next meeting is canceled.
Ah, good.
Okay, the next one is canceled, you don't have to come to that, Glenn.
That that's the one for next week, that's canceled.
Yeah, so the next one is August seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I think.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Um on the minutes, I only received comments on uh June nineteenth, and they were very minor and you'll actually see them in your copy.
Okay, yeah, I.
Couple of little uh.
I had a couple grammatical things I sent Maureen, yeah.
Couple of little grammatical things there on the third page, and that was it.
I just I just noticed one thing on the ZDA of five fifteen.
Um, okay.
It's not oh five.
Oh, wow, what what do you mean oh five, oh, oh five, uh huh, yes. I just was having a flashback.
Do you have fresh copies of those?
No, they're sitting on the table.
That's a long flashback.
And they must have gotten mixed up in the in the uh.
Yeah, they're all three of them really.
Petitioners, yeah, they got it.
They're probably on the bottom.
Okay.
Nope.
No, I messed them all up.
Oh, you messed them all up.
Yeah, I was I was all all over this package of documents.
That's what we had the uh. You get the minutes before us uh right now, uh.
There were all the minor comments.
Right.
Iowa five twelve thirteen.
And they're on there.
Okay, uh when are we going order, uh somebody has any, okay, the minutes of, uh let's see, five uh
Fifty.
Five fifteen oh five?
No, fourteen.
I was having a flashback.
Oh, it should be five fourteen, okay. Very good, uh any other comments on that?
No, I didn't receive any other comments.
Okay. That do I hear a motion on uh the minutes of five fourteen oh five? To accept as as amended, yes, so moved.
Fourteen. Five. Two fifteen.
Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you, uh minutes of, uh is that the same thing then, five twenty one fourteen or five twenty two?
Five twenty two.
Five twenty two, that's what it says, but if the other one was fourteen.
No, it's five fifteen fourteen.
That was the year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it was the year, okay, five twenty two four, my mistake. Any uh comments on that, on the minutes of five twenty two fourteen? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of five twenty two fourteen, as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And the final minutes we have is uh six nineteen fourteen, minutes of six nineteen fourteen, any comments? I had a couple and it looks like, well, somebody's written them here in pencil, that they're gonna take care of them.
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I had a.
Those are yours, they're on the third page.
Right, third page, special permit is conditioned upon the and uh, yeah, there were some misspellings, there's a grammatical in there, I corrected.
Yeah. I didn't have time to.
Okay, so she'll take care of those. Uh any further comments? Any further comments on six nineteen fourteen? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept those minutes as written. So moved, second? All those in favor? Thank you, and that takes care of the minutes. Uh, I know we had something else on the agenda tonight in regards to. David was gonna give a briefing, though we're here quite late, in regards to the advisory committee, ZBA, uh, excuse me, the bylaw advisory committee, the ZBA committee, if he would like to, that's fine, I know we, Maureen had, uh, sent us, uh, a copy of supposedly one of the bylaws changes to, uh, a, a section, and, uh, from what we understand, uh, that has been changed since, so we, we're not even gonna discuss that.
Right, the, the, the intent was to present a draft
Yeah, go ahead David.
of the updated or proposed updated section for nonconforming laws used in structures.
Right.
To our board for, uh, consideration and comment, uh, because the zoning advisor, for the advisory committee, we all agreed that ZBA comment would be helpful, useful, and in some cases, I think, necessary to a good, solid, nonconforming rewrite. Uh, however, uh, as recently as last night, the section, draft section that the board was, our board was provided with has changed significantly, and we don't have an updated version of that, so I would just assume not waste our valuable time at this hour going over some draft that's already been changed.
Right, right.
I will, uh, I'll talk to the zoning advisory committee when I s, well, I suppose it's probably too late, I'll double check to see if there is a version, uh, matching our updated version from last night, and if it's on a, if it's on a publicly available website, I may notify Maureen.
Maureen, yeah.
Uh, who can maybe point it out to the members of the board, uh, if they'd like to go on and take a look at it and offer any comment. It's still a draft, the draft is being presented to the board of selectmen unless I'm wrong, and that changes next Tuesday, uh, for their consideration as the next step in the process.
Okay. Thank you David.
Would that mean that, um, you could, um, would it be appropriate for Zach to, um, send out a copy of the proposed changes under six three and, for example, accessory apartment to the board? Or do we need to have the selectmen see that first?
Well, everything is.
Our comments are not gonna get in there because it's, the, the timing is wrong.
Yeah, I, I, the, this board's comments might not make it to the draft document that's gonna be presented to the board of selectmen, but the draft that's being presented to the board of selectmen is just that, any draft.
Right.
Uh, so there is still plenty of time between now and when they write the warrant, um, draft the warrant to provide additional comment, and I will talk to the town planner, um, to see if we still think it's a, I still think it's a valid exercise, to see if she still thinks it's a valid exercise uh, for us to make note to this board for comment, I think there would be valuable comments from this board.
I think so.
That's a section that we deal with.
All the time.
Consistently, there have been significant streamlines made, uh, in my view, and I was of the opinion that I think we all wanna take a look at that, um, to make sure that the proposed streamlines are in keeping with what we like to see, because ultimately, we're gonna be the permit granting authority, and, and, uh, this board will be the permit granting authority with regard to that section. So I'll, I'll wait to hear from Maureen, I'll, I'll communicate with Maureen in daytime government, and we'll sort it out and provide access if, if and when necessary. Yeah, get that one out.
I, I'll have that in office till Monday.
But that's okay, that's okay, there's no rush, at this point, no rush.
No problem.
Close tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Even though I know how to get a hold of her when you closed. Thank you.
I think that takes care of business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, uh, for your attention tonight, uh, board members, it was a heady case, and, uh, we get them every so often.